I will read the announcement pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, general laws, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the governor's March 15, 2020, and March 23 order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. This meeting of the Town of Southampton Select Board is being conducted via remote participation. No in-person attendance of members of the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided for in the order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to view this meeting while in progress may do so by go to zoom.us/join, hit "Join a Meeting" in the top right of your screen, type in the meeting ID 881-1841-8477, use the password 685785, hit "Join." Please be sure to mute your device when joining in. Note, to join in video meeting with cell phone, you will need to download the Zoom app from the App Store. Call-in telephone number for this meeting is 646-558-8656, or by watching Public Access TV, Charter Spectrum Channel 191. In-person attendance and public comment at Select Board meetings will be suspended until further notice. If you email a written public comment before the scheduled Select Board meeting, it will be read at that Select Board meeting. If you email a written public comment after viewing something at a live televised Select Board meeting, it will be read at the next Select Board meeting. Please send your public comments via email to selectmen@townofsouthhampton.org. Please note that all public comments must be within the requirements of the policy of public comments listed in the open time for the public on the Select Board agenda.
Thanks very much, Ed.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the Select Board meeting. Today's the 21st of July, and we'll begin, as we do, with the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks, everyone. Before we begin the agenda, does anybody have any announcements or any gems of wisdom, I would like to say thank you to Matt Rowland, who has spent a lot of time helping us with this very painful process of the budget with his Excel expertise and also mathematical ability, and also to the department heads. This is a very painful process. The state, we're in the middle of a terrible health crisis, as well as an economic one. So I just want to extend my gratitude to Ed and Matt and the department heads for all the turnaround work they've done to try to make this budget work. So, thank you. So, we will just go ahead right in then with the agenda. We have an appointment. First of all, John, thank you for sending the notice out to the Finance Committee with an update on what the status is currently as far as the budget and how it works in terms of the Finance Committee. We recruited, you know, five members to be on the Finance Committee, and John, as our liaison, is in the process of setting up a meeting. So if there are any Finance Committee members on the call tonight, I just want to make sure that I welcome you. It's a tough time to join the Finance Committee, but we're so grateful that you've stepped up in order to help, and we hope you would consider running for the Finance Committee when we have our election September 1st.
And on that, Rainey, just had a quick second. Out of the five members, four of them got back to me with their times for a meeting in the next week, so once I get the fifth member back, I'll let everybody know, in case they want to sit in on it.
Great. Thank you, John. Okay, the first is an appointment to the Conservation Commission. It's a reappointment, and it's Daniel Lavalley, and it's a reappointment term to expire July 30, 2023. Would someone like to make a motion to reappoint Daniel Lavalley?
I'll make a motion to reappoint Dan Lavalley to the Conservation Commission for a three-year period.
Second.
Did you want to say anything, Chris, as the liaison to CONCOM?
No, just that Dan is a new member, along with a couple of others, but he has been very, very active and is very engaged and learning a lot already, and just, I think, could be a great asset to the CONCOM. So really welcome his energy.
Great. Well, thank you, Dan, for stepping up again to be on the Conservation Commission. We have no presentations, and so we can talk about Select Board reports if someone would like to start.
Okay, I'll start. This is for the Hampshire Regional High School Committee. Okay, there will be an achievement ceremony for the class of 2020, and it will be held on August 8, and more details will be forthcoming. The teachers and the administration sent out a virtual tour to all incoming 7th graders. This is in lieu of the usual orientation that's provided to facilitate the transition from elementary to junior high or middle school. The high school received a little more than $25,000 safety grant to cover lighting, the public address system, and a security camera replacement. These items were in the capital plan, but the work has not yet been started. As far as staffing goes for the FY '21, they've hired five teachers to replace the five retirements, and they added one new position, a new paraprofessional. Now, let's go to the big topic, which is school open planning. The state has required that each district develop three plans, which were due on July 17. One of the, each of the plans, one would be a full in-person plan where all the students would attend as regular students, a normal schedule. Another would be a full remote plan where students would be taught via computer at home. And the third was a hybrid plan, which would be some full-time in-person, some remote students, or alternating, in some cases, alternating weeks for all students between in-person and remote. They're also planning for more remediation and more in-class time, with less time spent changing classes. So I guess they're going to lengthen the periods, is the way I can best understand how that would be implemented. Okay, the details of the plan, these three plans were all emailed to the families on 7/17, and there will be a Zoom meeting for high school and middle school students and their families, and that will be held on July 28. The information about how to access that Zoom meeting is on the high school webpage. Even if schools, just to make a note here, according to the state, even if the schools open with in-person instruction, the school must offer a remote option for families who do not want to send their kids to school if they have concerns about the COVID virus. The state, you know, as I mentioned, they submitted their plan to the state on July 17, and as I understand, that the state is not going to respond to the districts until sometime, with their decision is based on their plan until sometime in August. The school is also considering a staggered start, meaning they'll phase in the numbers of students over time and see how it goes before they ramp up. They have a lot of, they put in a lot of time already planning to offer a safe environment, which includes protective equipment, plexiglass dividers, sanitation, including handwashing stations and deep cleaning, air purification kits, new classroom configurations to address the six-foot separations, increased technology to offer one-to-one model so that students and teachers can each have their own devices for in-school and at-home use. Now, that cost was not part of the budget that we're looking at right now. Estimated cost for that is a little more than $331,000, so it's a very big-ticket item. The school did conduct a parent survey, and they had over 1,000 responses regarding the return, their parents' return to school, concerns and needs. And the results of that, just to mention a couple of things, that they favored the hybrid model, which was a combination of at-home, remote learning, and in-person learning, and 70% of the families favored a phased reopening of the school. There are some technical issues for some families. There are 50 to 60 families of students in Hampshire Regional that don't have quality broadband for remote learning, so they're particularly challenged. As far as the teachers go, there will be some new duties resulting from distancing. Teachers will be teaching sixth classes instead of five. Obviously, there's concern for the health of the staff, the staff and students as well, looking and discussing what type of accommodations might be made for sick and personal time during this time. Matt Rowland was on the call, and he had a great idea. He suggested that the school publish a list of needed personal protection equipment items so that the community can donate to underwrite the cost of those to the school. I don't know that they published that list, or they're going to take up on the offer, but it was a very good idea of how we could all become involved and support the school in that way. There are other factors that they're working on, including busing requirements. Right now, they're planning on 24 students per bus versus the current capacity, which I think is somewhere in the 40s. They're obviously, like everyone, working hard to identify funding sources. There are a couple of federal sources that they're looking at, obviously the CARES Act, and then there's another one, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief. They are working with state and federal emergency management agencies as a way of identifying and securing funds to, obviously, supplement all these other changes that have to go on in the school in order to bring everyone back together. The state has a formula grant that they're making available, $202 million to support the school reopening. If we get that money, it must be spent by the end of December, and it must be related to COVID. It's limited to COVID expenses. At this point in time, the state is not offering any real fiscal direction, so everyone is developing their own plans and just, you know, waiting for the action of the state. As far as the budget goes, as you know, three of the five districts in our, three of the five school districts in our region have approved the budget for the high school. Goshen will meet later this week on the 23rd. Of course, Southampton will meet on August 15. Right now, the expectation is the Goshen. The other three districts did pass the budget. Goshen is expected to pass the budget with an override. Just for general information purposes, the superintendent's contract will not be renewed at the end of this year. After the pandemic and after schools officially closed, food services provided over 1,000 meals through the end of June through a program called, that they set up called Grab and Go, but the program ended because of lack of funding. There were a number of Southampton students who participated in that program, and the school is currently helping families identify other sources, including the Southampton and the East Hampton food pantries. The school committee approved the rental of a classroom to the Clark School for $28,000. And moving on to another item, the discussion of the school resource officers and the culture of the school. The principal reported having excellent relations and great experiences at the Hampshire Regional High School. You know, that's having a police officer on site and, you know, mixing in with students so that everybody is comfortable with that type of relationship. The school committee also voted to rename Columbus Day Indigenous Peoples' Day, and the school committee established another committee, a subcommittee, to review the cost sharing of central office expenses, and two members from the Southampton, representatives of Southampton School Committee volunteered to serve. Just to mention, the next meeting is scheduled for July 27 at 6:30 via Zoom. So, thank you.
Wow, thank you, Francine. That's a lot of information. They got 1,000 surveys back regarding the parents and families? That's pretty amazing.
Yeah. Well, it's a major concern of everyone.
Yeah. Any other committees, Francine?
No.
Okay, anybody else?
Yeah, I've got a couple. Start with the Board of Assessors. They met this past week. I was unfortunately not able to go due to a conflict, but they basically handled routine matters. And just to note, though, that we will be having a vacancy on the Board of Assessors. It's a three-person board, and there will be a vacancy coming up. Doric Dodd is not running for reelection. The CONCOM met last night and spent time looking at the East Street Bridge project and the order of conditions that has to go along with that, with a wetlands scientist that they have engaged to help write the order of conditions to be sure that the engineering firm and the eventual contractor are doing things in accordance with wetlands law, et cetera, and I'm sure Ed will talk about that more in his report. We also spent time looking at the forest stewardship program, especially looking at the, with the forester on the cutting plan for Darrell's Path, which is going to be starting, hopefully, very soon. And then the last thing most likely will be, the Master Plan Committee will meet on next week, on Monday evening, and we'll see where we are with the number of surveys that have come in thus far. I believe we're probably in the mid-500s, which is pretty good, but we've got a long way to go. We have another month to get the survey in, so I'm really encouraging anybody who's on the call tonight, if you haven't filled out the survey, please take a few minutes and do so. It's very easy, online, and if you've picked one up at Town Hall, a hard copy, please be sure to return it. Our magical makeshift boxes are working, and so we'd really appreciate the time and effort that people have taken to give us their thoughts and their opinions about what the future should look like for Southampton. So you've got time to still fill it out, so please, please encourage your friends and neighbors to do so. And that's it, I think.
Thank you. That was a good job with the survey. I think it was easy. Whoever designed the format, it was well done.
Thank you. It was a group effort.
So, everybody, I hope you get a chance to fill it out. It will help a lot with getting feedback on the direction of the town.
Yeah. I think it'll help set our priorities, too, in terms of some of the big projects that have been hanging around for a long time, and help understand, from the residents' point of view, what they think is really a priority. So it's really important, yeah.
Thanks, Chris. Anybody else?
Sure, I can go. You already talked about the Finance Committee being kind of reconstituted. We're going to have a meeting within the next week. The request for proposals for long-term, short-term disability, the vendors had a date of last week to spend their questions, which they did, and Ed and I worked on the responses, and Ed has posted the vendor questions and our responses on the website and the bid opening, I think it's August 4, I believe. So a couple more weeks, we'll have the vendors' responses, so we can look at those and see where we can go from there. The Planning Board, talked to Paul Demon on the High Street Scenic Way proposal. He's working with Ed, that's getting him information that he needs to host a public hearing, so hopefully that'll be for the September meeting, because the next meeting is August 12, and that'd be a little too soon. So hopefully in September, we'll have that settled. And as the Select Board members know, Chris sent out an email from John Deles with the $7.5 billion secured for transportation, and in that is that $870,000 for Southampton Greenway. So I'm going to get ahold of Paul Fergal, who is the Chair of the Greenway Committee, and see if we could, you know, keep going on that a little quicker now.
Yes, that was a bit of good news.
Yes.
Absolutely.
Yeah. So thanks for that, Chris.
Yep.
And that's all I have.
Thanks, John. Matt, do you have any?
There's no point, because we're going to get to all of mine today. School Committee met, and we'll talk about that when we get into the budget. PQB, we'll go over that when we do the PCFs and PRFs, and Capital, we'll go over when we meet tomorrow to do the articles.
All right, thanks a lot. Council of Aging doesn't meet in July. Open Space Review Committee is meeting on Thursday night. The Board of Health did meet, working on getting, it was late afternoon, so I wasn't able to attend. I'm working on getting a copy of the recorded session, and Ed and I have been in touch with the Southampton media about getting a copy of that, because it's not currently uploaded on our website. So that's it. Ed, would you like to do your report?
Sure. Just got a couple of things. One is CONCOM did meet last night on the notice of intent for the East Street Bridge, and they did close the public hearing on that, so that's closed. They'll be developing the order of conditions for, at their next meeting, but by closing the public hearing portion, it allowed the HB to move forward with doing some of the filings that they need to do that they couldn't do until that was closed out. So, and the Conservation Commission had a very good dialogue about the project and potential draft order of conditions at last night's meeting. I was very impressed with them. Our Emergency Management Director, Charlie Knecky, let us know that MIMA has some PPE for the town in general, made up of masks, shields, and goggles, so we should be receiving that next week. And then, lastly, we did receive notification from Hampshire Regional School District for negotiations, participation. Greetings, we have recently been informed that the Hampshire Regional Educators Association, which is to enter into collective bargaining on behalf of teachers and educational support professionals in accordance with 603 CMR 41.04, please accept this letter as notification by the Regional Superintendent of Schools indicating the time, place, and date of a meeting to be held by the Regional School District, at which the Chief Executive Officers or Chairman of Boards of Selectmen shall elect one of their number of, to represent them in union negotiations. This meeting will be held on Monday, August 10, 2020, at 6:30 PM at the Hampshire Regional High School Library, or via Zoom as part of the regular Hampshire Regional School Committee meeting. If you have any questions, feel free to contact me directly. Now, this particular negotiation will not have anything to do with wages. The teachers' union reached out and wanted to be a part of the planning process for reopening, so this negotiation revolves around health and safety and the requirements for that, for the reopening. So I don't know if we have any one of our five members of the Select Board that might be interested in participating in this, and, you know, if so, if the Select Board would like to forward their nomination to be included for the five towns to decide and be elected as to who represents the five towns at this particular negotiation.
You're saying that they will choose among the five-town nominees, who only one person will serve, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, I'll put my name in as the liaison to the high school.
John, is that, John, did you do that last time? I'm just, I just want to know.
I did it a time before. I think my name was in the last time, and there was a gentleman from one of these smaller towns, who I believe was an attorney, who did it. Tammy, Tammy's muted, but shake your hand yes or no, Tammy? Yeah, she says yes. I guess I got it right.
I just...
If I remember correctly, though, this person doesn't go on the negotiating committee. It's on the larger committee that the negotiating committee keeps informed and takes suggestions from, I believe is the way to put it. Is that right, Tammy? Now, she's saying no. I know I was on the negotiating one, but I thought it changed. But anyways, Francine, I wasn't on it last time.
Yeah, it's, there's likelihood that I won't be either, but I'll volunteer.
Do we need a nomination for her, or is that...
Yeah, I would.
Okay, so I'll nominate Francine to be the Southampton Select Board Liaison.
I'll second it.
Ed, can you unmute Rainey, please? Just a quick reminder, folks, I think if we mute ourselves, you're going to need Ed to unmute you, so try to stay unmuted. Who seconded? Did somebody second? Because I'm happy to second.
First second.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's a lot of activity overhead at Barnes, so I unmuted, I muted myself. So, okay, so Francine has offered to do that. The question came up about whether or not the, whether you're able to participate, and what was the answer to that? Because John's right, in the past, I don't believe they were allowed until, what, till the end or something?
Well, when I did it two times ago, I was on the committee that actually negotiated with the group. Last time, I thought that wasn't the case. Am I right on that, Tammy? Tammy says I'm wrong, so that person was also involved with the group that negotiated. She's saying yes.
Okay. All right, I was thinking similarly to you, John, but anyway, Francine's offered, and we have a motion and a second. Any other questions?
I just want to say, I put my name in there as the liaison, but certainly if there's anyone else who wants to do this, I'll be happy to, you know, have them take the responsibility.
Okay. I think people are in general support of you doing it, Francine. We have a motion, a second, all those in favor?
All's eye.
Rowland, eye.
Art, eye.
Road news. Tishman abstain.
You can vote for yourself, Francine.
Yeah.
If we have confidence in you, you got to have confidence in yourself.
Tishman eye.
Absolutely.
She needs it to an eye?
She did.
Yes, I did.
Any, anything else, Ed, on your report?
No, that covers what I've got for tonight.
Okay. Any questions for Ed? I'll make my way back to the agenda here. The next thing on the agenda, then, is the, I'll turn this over to Chris. We gave out the Boston Post Kane to Mary Balfour, who turns 97 this summer, but it was acknowledged at the same time that we had a couple of other people who were actually turning 97 also this summer. They just weren't the oldest. So the Southampton, Celebrate Southampton Committee was planning on acknowledging them, and now that that is not going to happen, we would still like to make arrangements to acknowledge them. So, Chris, would you like to speak to that?
Yeah, sure, thanks, Rainey. I've been in touch, and I'm also on the Celebrate Southampton Committee, so I'm sort of wearing two hats here. I guess Mrs. Balfour's birthday is actually this coming Saturday, and she turns 97, and as you said, she's been the recipient of the Boston Post Kane Award. I don't know, was there actually a letter or a card or anything that went with that already, or is that, I'm not sure what we actually give them?
Hang on a second, I will get it, and I will show it to you.
Okay.
Be right back.
All right.
So there's a plaque, and there's also a nice certificate, and then their name is put on the plaque that's in Town Hall.
Okay. Now, I've seen the one in Town Hall. Okay, I didn't know what had actually been given to her directly, so that we would consider has been, has been done, then. Is that what I'm understanding?
So I think if Ed has it, then she doesn't have it. That's my guess.
Ah, there, good point, good point. Well, let's wait till he comes back, then.
So the last time I went over to Mr. Hendrick and gave him, his family, the certificate, so I think the last, the last time we did it, we had a woman come to the Select Board meeting, and that's always nice, when that can happen, and then we went over, gave the family a separate plaque, and then put their name on there. So I think that's the intention, but I think COVID happened, so...
Right. Okay. Well, so assuming Mrs. Balfour has not gotten whatever we need to present, I would be willing to, I don't know the family, but I'd be willing to volunteer to go and do that along with another one or two people, if we'd like. I think we need to keep it small, but someone from Select Board, most likely, on that, or we could do that.
I'd love to.
Yeah, either Friday or Saturday, or whatever time is good.
Yeah. Yeah, we can come up with a time. If there, if there's anybody else that would like to do it instead or in addition, that's fine, too.
Yeah, yeah.
We have, we have three. Would we have to post that as a meeting, or...
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, so maybe... Yeah, so maybe two would be best. If you can't make it, let me know. I'd be glad to go. But if it's a two week, you want to go, that's great.
Okay. And then it would just depend on when, when, um, so Ed, um, he's got a.
Yeah.
Maureen, I think Lucy was trying to get your attention for this item. I'm not sure, but she's muted.
Yep.
To unmute her, and it doesn't look like Ed's back yet.
Yeah, he's back. He's back. He's holding the plaque. Yep. He's got the plaque. It looks very nice. Yeah.
This is the plaque.
Great. Okay. So.
Oh, I don't think she wanted to have any big fanfare, but, um, so we'd have to have a big fanfare, but we can certainly at least, um, if she's in agreement, show up and actually provide her with it. I and go, I think you wanted to say something else about the other two residents.
Yes. Yeah. So with that, Lucy's trying to get in, Ed. Sorry. So while, while we're waiting on that, so just to say, all three of these people have turned 97 this summer, and Mrs. Balfour actually is the oldest by a couple of days. The next one is Leona Hendrick, who is the wife of Robert Hendrick, who had received the Boston Post Kane a few months ago. And then her brother-in-law, Ted Hendrick, who many of us know, also turns 97 in the middle of August. So those are the other two. The Hendricks seem to have some pretty good genes in that family, I think. What we would like to do, suggestion, because these would have been the ones we would try to celebrate also at Celebrate Southampton. I've talked to the family, Ted's daughter in particular. And what we're thinking about again would be, have to be very small, just keeping in mind the COVID situation and as usual, and nobody wants a big, big fuss made over them. But I'm thinking maybe a couple of people from select board and a couple of people from Celebrate Southampton. And we would have a card and maybe a bouquet of wildflowers and basically go over to Leona's house, which is right in the church parking lot area. And Paula, Ted's daughter, would bring Ted over there. And we would have the two of them together and we could do a small, just a small presentation. No, no big fall to roll, no, no big gathering of singing happy birthday from the church parking lot. I suggested that and it was shot down royally. So it would be just a real small, you know, three, four people. And Paula was hoping we could do it during the week, sometime during a weekday rather than a weekend. So again, if one or two people, and, you know, if we had to post this as a meeting, I mean, is that a big deal? I mean, I mean.
Just in a couple of days' notice.
Yeah, I mean, more than typically, so, so that would be the idea. And the possible dates I was thinking of would be maybe August, kind of in between the two birthdays. So August 5th or 6th, which is a Wednesday or a Thursday. And that's just tentative, and maybe a late morning, noon time-ish kind of thought is all I have in mind right now. But I would take care of the, the card and the flowers and whatever. I'll, I'll take responsibility for arranging all that if somebody would like to join in on it.
That sounds great.
Yeah, if you're going to post a meeting, we can, more than two can be there. Let me know. It'd be nice.
Yeah, that is a, one of the nicer things that, um, we get to do. So I think that'd be great. Once you find out the families, if you can just let Ed know and then he can notify all of us, okay?
All right, that's fine. And, and maybe Tammy, since you're on the Celebrate Southampton end, maybe you can figure out maybe two people from Celebrate Southampton would like to come as well.
She's muted. I just, I wanted to reiterate what Maureen said, that Mary, when I spoke to her, she was so honored, but she said, I don't want a big thing. I don't want to go in front of cameras. I don't want pictures taken. So it's exactly what Maureen said. Sorry, I, you know, couldn't say it without.
That's fine. We, we would just try to contact the family and just ask if we could come over on Saturday and, you know, do that. So.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks a lot, Chris. So you'll go ahead and let Ed know on both of those dates what works or both of those situations. And then depending on the, who's of the select board will post a meeting or just have a couple of people go, okay?
Sure. And the only thing I need would be a contact phone number maybe for the Balfour family. I don't have one. So that would be something Ed, you could send me later, maybe.
I know she is pretty active with the senior center, so definitely Joan, the director of the senior center, would have her contact information.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is the update on the East Street Bridge. Did you say everything you wanted to say about that, Ed?
Yes, I did.
Okay. Then we're on to new business, bid and opening award, the IFB number 20-008, the sale of real property, 93 College Highway. So the date of that opening bid was, what was the date of that, Ed?
That's today and right now.
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a open bid on this meeting. Okay. So why, can I turn it over to you then?
Certainly. And we did receive one bid package for IFB 20-008, which is contract agreement for sale of real property, one parcel at 93 College Highway. Yeah, I am opening it now. This was hand delivered by Cheryl Fletcher. All right. Bid form A, which is the bid award for 93 College Highway, map 19, lot 223. Total for parcel, map 19, lot 223, $4,221. Authorized representative is Robert S. Fletcher, or nominee. It is signed by Robert Fletcher, July 20, 2020. Owner of Fletcher Farm, 22 Gun Road, Southampton, Mass. 01073. He had, they, he has included a list of three financial references. There is a signed certificate of non collusion. There is a certificate of tax compliance. Both from, both from the state and from the town's treasurer collector, Jennifer Day. And if the Fletcher family is looking for their veterinary confirmation for the animal hospital for Buddy, I have it here in the bid package. I'll get it back to you. I promise.
They wanted to add a little extra.
They have included a statement of purchase, yeah, per pess, excuse me, from Robert S. Fletcher. My interest in 93 College Highway is to remediate the longstanding soil erosion issues, not only on the eight acres, but also on my abutting property. It is well documented that the erosion is continuing and must be addressed. In April of 2020, I applied to the Mass Department of Agriculture's Sarah Grant in anticipation of being the successful bidder for acquiring this property. The Sarah Grant stewardship assistance and restoration on APRs helps resolve stewardship issues caused by a prior owner to restore active commercial farming on APR land. In May, we received notice attached that our proposal, also attached, was recommended for funding in the amount of $25,000. We have kept APR informed of the program. And if we are the successful bidder, they need an immediate letter from the select board supporting the proposed drainage project, since the land transfer is not expected to take place for an additional 60 days, according to the town administrator. We are hopeful that the delay in the bidding process has not jeopardized the grant award. If I am a successful bidder, I will contact the stewardship planner at EMDAR on Wednesday morning. This will be phase two of the erosion project, where phase one was completed on my property in 2017 on the lower pasture that abuts the eight acres. I expect that it will take a significant amount of resources to prevent further erosion on my land. I will continue to consult with NRCS, USDA, and EMDAR for the expertise and engineering resources regarding the best solutions for this property. And there's an attachment here concerning the Sarah Grant. It says you are receiving this email in regards to your application submitted on round 21-9 of the stewardship assistance and restoration on APR's grant. Sarah program applications have been ranked, and your application is recommended to move forward in the review process. I must emphasize, this is not a notice receiving a grant award, and your project cannot start until a signed contract is in place. Although we are hopeful, funding for the program is still subject to approval at this time. In order for your application to be considered, a series of steps must take place. The next step is schedule a site visit on your APR to discuss project specifics and to observe the areas in need of restoration. This site visit will also serve as a compliance check to make sure the obligations of the APR are being met. Due to concurrent COVID-19 situation, EMDAR is currently unable to carry out these site visits. When the department receives a guidance from the governor that these site visits are permitted, you will be contacted to discuss when and if you are comfortable with setting up such a visit. All necessary precautions will be administered in line with the governor's mandates and recommendations. If you have any questions at all, please feel free to reach out to me via my contact information below. Congratulations on being recommended, and I look forward to working with you. I'm going to admit a couple of people. And then there's another email from Taylor Arsenault, who's the APR stewardship planner for the Sarah Grant. Great to hear. I'm glad that it's progressing. If you could reach out to the select board and obtain their approval prior to our visit, that would keep the ball moving forward. All we need is a statement from the appropriate people saying they've reviewed your application attached on X date and acknowledge and support the proposed work to be on the APR and have them sign. You can give them my contact info below if they have any questions.
Da da da.
Yeah, there's the form for request for response for the Sarah Grant. And let's see. And some photos of the erosion areas that went along with that grant and a map of the property. Everything that is required to be here is here. I would recommend that the board consider awarding this to the highest qualified bidder, Robert S. Fletcher, in the amount of $4,221 for the acquisition of 93 College Highway.
I will be happy to make that motion.
Second.
Okay, John, and then Matt, what questions do you have?
I mean, we, we should draft that letter. We should do what we need to do to, to help the Fletchers out, keep their, their process moving. So I don't know if we want to amend that motion or we can just, you know, maybe once we get through the budget here, have that draft that up for them so that they don't get delayed.
Yeah, I'll be happy to draft it up.
I think it'd be, I think it can be one and the same, Matt.
I just want to be clear, they weren't throwing in the pet as part of the deal there.
Well, they are, they do have a petting zoo.
And she's not mute, so we can accept the pet if we want. She can't say anything.
Do you, um, do any of those documents need to be certified, Ed?
No.
Okay.
As we move forward, we'll develop a purchase and sale that both parties will have to sign. And then we will move forward to the closure, the actual closing, which should be approximately 60 days from now. The Fletchers did reach out and ask me, asked me about, you know, a down payment amount for the, when signing the purchase and sale. I responded to them that the town would be fine with payment in full at, at the, at the closing.
So, yeah, just a question, 60 days, it sounds like the Fletchers are trying to get ahead of this this season. Is there a way to make closing faster? That just seems like a long closing timeframe. Is it because of us or the process with APR?
It, it'll be a combination of drawing up the documents, you know, and getting them signed. And actually, one piece that they, you know, had asked for was time to do their due diligence, which we would, I said, would give them 20 days to do their due diligence between the signing of the purchase and sale and the actual closing. But, you know, we, we can try to work this out, you know, inside of that 60 days also.
That would be great. So we have a motion and second. Ed, you got those motions and seconds?
Yeah, John made the motion. Matt seconded it.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
Fishman, I.
Bowls abstain.
Roll and die.
Art, I.
Road nine. Thank you so much, everybody. I'm hoping that this will go a long way to help. And thank you to the Fletchers for your patience and for being a community farm that we all love to visit and look at. So hopefully it'll help the erosion on your farm.
Would you like me to unmute the Fletchers so they can say anything?
Are they, if they're on the phone, absolutely.
Hi. Well, I was not here. He's baling hay. But as far as the 60 days is concerned, the main, if we can get that letter, we're concerned that they've done this, the first pass on site visits. They came, we were scheduled for July 10th, but we were uncertain as to what would happen today. So they were here the other day, and we told them that we could inform them tomorrow whether we were successful or not. So I think the, the biggest thing is, the reason I attached the, our proposal on the back of that was because I didn't want you folks to sign something saying you support something without seeing, you know, what we're doing. And so we just don't want to lose that. And so it's just the next phase. So although I, I would very much like to close before the 60 days, but if there's a way to at least have Mr. Gibson do a letter on behalf of the board, and I can get that to EMDAR in the next day or two, I think that, that should be good to at least have them come and do a site visit. And, you know, we can tell you what we're doing. We've got to get Conservation Commission's approval on it, but at least it keeps that grant intact. So thank you.
Who would you like me to address the letter to at EMDAR? Cheryl?
I think if you do it to that Taylor Arsenault, that's the stewardship planner for that particular grant program. And that's the same grant program that we, when we did that first phase on the drainage, on the upper pasture. So it, it works. I mean, you know, so I, I hope, it will definitely be a phased approach, but you folks will be kept up to date because you're still a co-owner on that, on the APR. So we still have to let you folks know what's going on. But hopefully we can seek out some folks that are far more knowledgeable than we are on how to hopefully put some good corrective measures in place. So thank you, and we can move ahead.
Great. Okay.
I'll take care of that for you, Cheryl.
Okay, so speaking of the co-owner approval, we do have another agenda item, the EMDAR co-owner approval form, Cheryl and Bob Fletcher for farm stand and labor housing. So that information was in the packet. And as a co-owner, we also have to sign off on the certificate of approval. Anything else you'd like to add to that, Ed?
No, you've got to cut, you've got. No, you've got to cover that there's one for the farm stand and then there's one for the labor housing. Very complete package. We, basically, we are not agreeing to the entire project. They still have to meet all zoning requirements, building permits, what have you of the town. Basically, what the select board would be agreeing to as a coholder would be that the development of the farm stand and then the studio, labor housing, it would not be detrimental to the running of the farm.
So in the packet were pictures and also a map. Does anybody have any questions?
Yes, just a question. Now, reading through this, it's going to be a small ancillary apartment, if you will, but you have to put a separate septic system in, Cheryl, for that?
No, so Barry Searle and Rob Whitley have already done the perks and they're, actually, we're meeting with Barry tomorrow morning. So they're, they're designing, the apartment is, it's called labor housing, but it's one apartment. It's for Matt. So the septic is being designed because we need a bathroom and handicapped accessibility and everything for the stand. So they're designing the septic as if it's a three-bedroom house. We got two good perks on it so that if I ever decide to, I can't envision this, but if I ever decide that I wanted to do more of a bakery-type thing or needed it some sort of a smaller kitchen or something. So they're over-designing it and so it will work for both. And when we did the, we did the well in the springtime and the well is enough for both the stand and the apartment, too.
So I guess the question was, you have to put a whole new septic in, you can't tie into your existing, huh?
We don't have one over there right now because the stand is just an open pavilion. So
Too far away. Okay.
And so the site location is the exact same place where the stand and the pettings we're building are now. And so we're going to use that strip of land so there's no disruption. You know, you've all been there. You know that we've run out of space. We need the big tents and so we're just turning it to face Gun Road and the pavilion building for the time being, I need it to, the timeframe is as soon as pumpkins are done, they will start the foundation. So I'll have to work out of that for Christmas, but after that, those two buildings will go and that's where the stand will be.
Yeah, nice building.
Thank you. And it's all Mark Seraphin's building it. Rich Truheart is doing the design work. So it's all people that we all know and have worked with before.
Congratulations.
We're not there yet, but thank you. We're very excited.
In advance. Okay.
Thank you.
And the housing, if you don't know, Matt is their son, who is a full-time worker on the farm. So would someone like to make a motion to approve the certificate of approval?
So moved.
I'll second.
Matt and then Francine, any further questions?
That's the only question. There's, I think Ed said it already, they just got to go through the regular process and get all the permits and everything. So that's the case. I'm fine with it.
So that would be a Martin, aye?
That would be a Martin, aye.
Okay.
Roland, aye.
Groden, aye.
Fishman, aye.
Falls, I think I can vote on this. I'm going to say aye.
I think you probably can. Thank you very much. Good luck, Cheryl.
Okay, well, thank you all.
Yep. Next is the 112 budget approval for August. So as you know, we're still in a little bit of limbo with the state. We approved a 112 budget for July and now we're asked to approve a 112 budget for August. That was sent to everybody by email. Ed, you want to speak to that?
Oh, certainly. And let's see, I sent it out separately, but we've got a 112 budget submission, which would include for municipal operations, general government of $55,492, public safety $152,806.48, public works $58,482.46, health and human services $11,625.71, culture and recreation $14,332.84, employee benefits $170,125.86, debt service of $27,700 for a subtotal of $490,474.27, school expenditures, North School $290,000, Hampshire Regional This is the first quarterly payment of our assessment. Subtotal for the school expenditures is $1,607,155.50 and then enterprise funds, water $90,000 and transfer station $10,000 for a total of $100,000. So that 112 budget for the month of August comes up to $2,197,629.77.
I have a question. How, what are the months that the quarterly assessments are due to Hampshire Regional?
Let's see, it should be, if I do this right, August, August, November, February, and May.
Just like our tax bill.
That makes sense.
Yep, it does. People have any questions about the 112 budget? And this is based on FY '20 rates or budget? No questions? Okay, would someone like to make a motion then?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Is there no further questions?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Roland, aye.
Card, aye.
And Groden, aye.
Thank you. And I will put all of these documents that needs your signatures, greenie, in the select board mailbox for you to stop by and sign.
Okay, I'll come in tomorrow and do that.
Okay.
Next is the COVID update.
And all things have been fairly quiet on the Southampton front as far as that goes for the police and the fire departments. All the employees are stable and healthy. Very little calls on both the police and the fire or EMS sides, which are COVID-related. The staff here at the town hall is doing well. As I've said in the past, we have provided masks, gloves, hand sanitizer for the staff as needed. So things are progressing. As I said earlier, our emergency management director, Charlie Keneke, has said that MEMA does have some PPE supplies for us in the form of masks, goggles, and shields. We are having our, still have, we are now having biweekly meetings of the department heads that are involved with direct contact with the COVID-19 situation. The school superintendent, Ari Osborne, has joined us. We will have another one on this upcoming Monday, the 27th, at 10:00 a.m. And, you know, on the school front, you know, they're at the point now of they've submitted their three different plans to the state and are waiting to hear back on, you know, whether they're accepted or not.
Okay, thanks, Ed. Any questions regarding the COVID we're at in terms of the town municipal schools? I just want to say that it is far from over. As we know, 30-something states have seen increase. Massachusetts thankfully is not one. So please, everybody, please continue to follow the guidelines of social distancing, wearing mask. And, you know, it's a little worrisome with the, the next phase opening and, you know, restaurants and also gyms and such. So please continue to be safe because it's so uncertain what lies ahead and we want everybody to be well. So the next agenda item then is the town election update in action.
And for the town election, we're still looking for, to have it on September 1st along with the state primary. At this point, there has been little activity in the, the state house as far as moving our special legislation for that date forward due to some of the bills that have, you know, come up in regards to some of the police and law enforcement changes and also trying to deal with the budget. So as we get closer to July 31st and having doubts that the legislature will get around to that, I would like to ask the select board for authorization to, for approval to authorize KP law to file in court for the town to have our annual town election on September 1st. And the other town that we were joined with in the special legislation process is also doing the same of petitioning the court.
You don't have any reading on how close it might be? You think we really have to go the route of including the attorneys in this in order to make sure?
Yeah, I would start the process.
Okay.
Now, Ed, this other town, I forget the town, but is there no way we can both go in jointly and maybe save some costs?
No, because they are not in the same county as we are. They're down in the eastern part of the state.
Okay.
I mean, the nice part of this is KP law has already developed the template for the other town. So the cost to us to plug us into that template is fairly minimal. It's like $400.
Have we heard anything from Rep. Sabadosa? Could she give us any insight there before we move on that?
I still, even if, at this point, you know, even if she said they might take it up before the end of July, I would move forward with this.
At the end of July is next week.
Yeah.
I mean, if we delayed it a week until we found out and we saved a thousand dollars, is that going to compromise anything?
The legislative session is supposed to end at the end of July. I would move this forward as quickly as possible now.
We're saving money by having the combined election, so I think that we don't want it in any way jeopardize our ability to have a town election on the 1st of September. Would somebody like to make a motion then to ask our attorneys to file legislation so that we could have our local election on the same day as the primary, September 1st?
Yeah, they petition, they would petition the court rather than legislation.
Okay.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Further questions, discussion? All those in favor?
Fishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Roland, aye.
Card, aye.
Groden, aye. And since there are a good number of people on the call, I just wanted to remind everybody that there are a lot of positions available on the ballot, including the school committee at a local level. And so I would strongly encourage people to consider stepping up and being on a committee in town. It's really helpful to have a lot of community involvement. So I hope you do that. And on the website is a list of the positions that are currently available. Okay, so that brings us to the budget for FY '21. FY '21 budget review and select board recommendations. So we had a very painful process last meeting of looking at the budget. As you know, we have a lot of uncertainty. Tax bills just came in. We do not know what the state cuts are going to be. It's pretty, pretty clear that they're going to be state cuts, but we have no idea at this particular point definitive numbers on chapter 70 funds and also local aid to cities and towns. So we came up with budget numbers and it was very painful, cutting ours, not cutting necessarily other positions, but definitely budgets. We then turned to the department heads and asked department heads to find further cuts and they were given a certain, a number of cuts that we're looking for because we were trying very hard to have some parity in terms of the percentages of cuts. So at this point, I will ask Ed if he wants to say anything and then perhaps turn it over to Matt Roland, who has the Excel spreadsheet with the current numbers. And I don't know if you have plugged in, thank you again to the department heads who have emailed back since last week and have actually proposed line item cuts in their own department. I can't tell you how helpful that has been. So Ed or Matt, who would like to start?
I just, first of all, I'd like to say I would like to thank the department heads that, you know, did respond to our request to take a look at their budgets and to meet the requested savings in those budgets. And we did get responses back from the library, the police department for police and dispatch, from the fire chief for fire and EMS, and let's see.
Highway.
And the highway superintendent for the highway department. And they, and all of those groups did. And North School, correct. Did come back and meet the requested amount in their, in the budgets that they sent back to us. The only one we did not get a response from by today was the board of health.
Okay, and in their defense, they do have to post a 48-hour meeting and their health directors on vacations.
Correct.
Okay, so would anybody like to say anything else before we go down the Excel spreadsheet and look and see where we're at and have Matt do a quick review of our targeted number?
No, just to, also just chime in and say thanks a lot to all the department heads because I think it really makes a whole lot more sense for you guys to sit there and figure out where you might be able to have some savings or, you know, feel the pain rather than us trying to determine that for you, which is kind of what we were trying to avoid doing last week, but it was a very difficult discussion. So I'm glad that you were able to sit down and say, okay, well, let's take another scrub at this and this is the real minimum that we can, we can manage with. So thank you all for doing that.
And the hope is, I mean, it's hard to know. People seem to think that the cuts are going to be deeper. I think that's the general consensus, but that, without knowing that, we came up with what we thought was a reasonable level to at least go to the town meeting with. And then we will be having a special town meeting in the fall where we're, you know, by then we should know definitive numbers. But for now, as you know, we do have to have a balanced budget. And so this is what we had to do quite painfully.
And this, and the exercise we're going through now is based on revenues that would be predicated or planned on a 1% reduction in chapter 70 school aid and a 3% reduction in unrestricted general government aid.
And there are some towns that are going into this budget with much, much higher percentage cuts, presuming that that was going to happen. So it's a little bit of in the dark. We're trying to be responsible, but at the same time, you know, I'm sure it feels drastic for some, but I fear it could get worse. We'll have to just wait and see what happens at the state level and also federal level because the state is hoping to get some funding from the federal government.
And that's, that's why the state isn't saying a word or moving forward on the budget here in Massachusetts because they're waiting for word from the federal government to see where they might be able to fill in some of those gaps.
And of course, the taxes just came in by the 15th of this month. So all that hopefully will know. So all that hopefully will know, not in time for the town meeting, which is on the 15th of August, but hopefully in early fall. So if there are no other questions, Matt, would you like to do a?
Yep.
Question, your screen?
Sure.
Hold on a second here. Just make sure I've got the.
Just a question, are we going to go through what each of the department heads proposed separately?
Yeah, so, so just a quick, let me just give a quick rundown for everybody so that we, we're all on the same page. So, because there's a lot, there's a lot of people here that weren't here last time, so I feel obligated just to give them a quick rundown. Is that okay, Rainey?
That's perfectly fine. Thanks, Matt.
All right, so just for everybody who's not familiar with this, column B here, which I've highlighted, was our budget that expired on June 30th. It is called the fiscal year 2020 budget, which runs from July 1st to June 30th. We are outside of the window of that budget, which is why we keep approving 1/12 budgets. We are obviously looking to approve a balanced or at least provide a balanced budget option for our upcoming town meeting and for the citizens to vote on. So this is the budget that has just passed. Column C is the individual requests from each department, which I'll get to in a second. Column D was a decision that the select board made. At this point, it was a week and a half, almost two weeks ago, where we decided to essentially copy over the 2020 fiscal year's budget and the only inclusion in that budget. So we would level fund based off of 2020 with the exception of we would include contractual increases so that we could look to see what those numbers would look like.
And just a point of clarification, that level funded does not mean level service.
Yes, yep. Level funded just simply means same dollars as 2020, not necessarily same service as 2020. Column E was our difficult discussion last week, which feels like a long time ago, but it was just this past Thursday where we ran down the budget in line item fashion and found equitable cuts across the departments to get to column F, which is our fiscal year 2021 proposed balanced budget option to the citizens at town meeting. So that's, that's the, those are the columns. Coming down here on the rows, I'm not going to, I'll try to highlight some of them, but the rows obviously represent the individual departments and the individual line items in our budget. I'm highlighting right now, general government. As we scroll down here, hopefully this is smooth on your end. We have police. We have fire, EMT, ambulance. We have education, which includes Hampshire Regional and Norris and Vocational. We have Public Works, which is generally speaking, our highway department. We have Health and Human Services, which includes library, no, I'm sorry, includes Board of Health and Council on Aging and Veterans. We have Culture and Recreation, generally speaking, includes the library. And then down here, we have employee benefits, retirement, health insurance, unemployment, et cetera. And down here, we have our debt service principal, which accounts for the principal payments on our debts and our debts are listed. And last but not least is the interest on each of the debt payments listed here. So it's broken out into principal and interest payments. Down here is the sum of each of the groups. So last year, we had just north of a $17.5 million budget. And you can see what the other, you know, we're proposing a balanced budget at 17 point, call it $7 million for the, for the coming 20-year, 2021. And right here. Which, let me just fix this. I'll fix it in a minute. Right here is our revenue prediction. So just to fill everybody in here on this, this is, these are the numbers that we put together based on what we expect our revenue to be in various scenarios. So this encompasses both state aid from chapter 70, which provides dollars for our school system, and unrestricted government aid, which provides state aid to our general, to our general government. Those numbers obviously trickle down to us. So what the state, whatever the state does, we have to react to and our budget has to either absorb or account for. Generally speaking, our state, and Ed, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think I remember this from the last meeting. Generally speaking, chapter 70 goes up in the neighborhood of 1% per year and unrestricted government aid goes up about 3% per year. That's been the history of this. And so generally, we, we plan for that and the state generally votes for that. Those are, you know, for lack of a better way to put it, things that generally happen automatically. Am I right on that so far?
I won't say that there is a smooth trend to that. There's some ups and downs, but recently that has been probably about a good average.
Okay. And then, as you can see, we've got, so the governor's budget here, the original one that the governor put out back in February, pretty much accounts for that, the 1% and the 3% increase. And you can see the anticipated revenue. So the anticipated revenue to the, to the town includes the unrestricted government aid, chapter 70, obviously existing homeowner property taxes, and then a, an accounting and an estimate based on new growth, which includes new businesses, new homes, new developments. And then obviously an accounting of our 2.5% allocation increase. So without further ado, the last line here essentially accounts for what in a normal year, what we'd be looking at in terms of state revenues, which in this case would be $17.774 million in revenue anticipated in a normal year in the absence of COVID. We'd be looking at about $155,000 budget deficit in that, in that scenario based off of column D, which is our level funded plus contractual increase column. As you go up, you've got an allocation here for level funded state aid. Basically, the state just provides the same chapter 70, same unrestricted government aid as, as last year. And I'm sorry, I should put 20. And then going up is just various scenarios that are out there in the public. There are rumor at this point and they're super conservative based on the rumors. So what we're looking at doing, you know, there's, there's rumors out there that suggest that chapter 70 could be cut and upwards of 10% and unrestricted government aid 30%. We're not going there yet, at least in terms of our planning. And hopefully we don't ever have to go there mid-cycle in our budget. But what we are planning for is a modest decrease in chapter 70 of 1% and a 3% decrease from fiscal year 20 in unrestricted government aid. What that translates to in terms of revenue is $17.691 million. And based off of column D, which is our level fund from last year to, with contractual increases, we're looking at a $238,000 budget deficit, which we have to balance by law. So we need to find, we need to find that amount so that we can at least send forth a balanced budget option to the citizens of this town at, at town meeting. And I'm sure that part of this discussion this evening will be whether or not we want to also provide a override option, but that's, that's kind of where we're at. So I'm happy to jump in here and make the adjustments. The spreadsheet contains essentially where we left off last select board meeting. I have in front of me printed off copies of what the department had sent to us. And I was simply going to, I was simply going to run down the sheet and we can go line by line again, but I was going to essentially plug in, I have a few questions myself based on what I saw, plug in the numbers and see kind of where we, where we shake out.
Before we go any further, does anybody have any questions about what Matt reviewed?
Our understanding is the only department you've not had a response from is the Board of Health.
Yes.
So that, we still show a deficit of a little under $800, $800, which is negligible, but at least that. Okay.
Okay, all right. I'm going to scroll back up here. We'll start with general government. You know, Ed, we.
Sorry. And I'm not sure where to put this, so maybe I'll just ask it now, if you don't mind. I've been looking this over for the last, the last week. We're talking about it and trying to put some figures together. And Jen Day gave this attachment where we want to cut the admin assistance by about 25% to gain some money here. And it's roughly $8,600. And if you add the two vacant positions, it's about $10,000. We've got to pay 60% unemployment. And these positions, and this is the part that I think we're shooting ourselves in the foot, treasurer, collector, the assessor, town clerk, Ed, as well as Vicky's assistant. This is, these are the people, except for Ed's, but you know, that's a different one we talked about. These are the people that generate the bills, the certificates, the permits, everything that goes out to the public where we get our revenue in. To take, for the sake of $10,000, we could easily lose more than $10,000 in revenue because we're rushing through it. We don't have time or whatever the reason. And at least for the time being, I would be more than happy to reduce our legal line by $10,000, keep these people in the positions until we see where this is going further. Because another complication, if we reduce it, as I read Jen's information, two people are going to lose health insurance, which right now could be pretty catastrophic to the people. So we're only gaining $10,000 and we're hurting the low-paid people that actually generate money for the town. If we get rid of a treasurer, collector, admin assistant and they don't follow up on taxes that are due and they just go unpaid for a year or two down the road. This happened before Donna Whiteley took over. We were, I think it was a quarter of a million dollars of unpaid taxes that were sitting out there because they weren't addressed in time. And Donna took care of that and Jen has kept everything up to date. I think we can lose far more than $10,000 by cutting it by 25%. And for the time being, I think we could go along with cutting legal by $10,000 because we don't spend legal all the beginning of the year. It's a process that over the course of 12 months. So once we know more, we can make more decisions. But for right now, I think it's just, you know, penny wise and pound foolish to use an old phrase. I don't know if the rest of you agree with me, but.
No, John, I looked at that number too, and it was really like a negligible number once you factor in unemployment and everything else. So I'm, I'm leaning in, in agreement with you.
And again, by cutting legal on this sheet right now doesn't mean that we're not going to put something back later or we have to cut other things, but keeps these people working, doing the job of bringing in the revenue to the town. Because the revenue goes down $30,000, we've actually lost 20 grand rather than save 10.
Yeah. Now, I think we've already cut 5,000 on legal. Are you suggesting an additional 10 or a total of 10?
No, I think an additional 10 to cover the assistance. But again, Chris, we don't know what legal is going to be. You know, some years we have, you know, a lawsuit, if you will, or whatever that we have to deal with. We don't know until the time comes. And a couple of months from now, we may, we're going to know a lot more about the budget. So if we need to put more money in, we can. If we need to make more cuts, we can. But to do it right now, to balance it for town meeting, I think taking out of legal would make more sense to preserve our, you know, hardworking employees until that point.
I support taking them, giving the money back to those lines, the additional 25%, because I do think the, the net is very, you know, negligible. And certainly this is people's, you know, livelihood and such. I'm just nervous about taking additional $10,000 out of legal. We just agreed to ask legal to, you know, to petition, you know, in terms of our election. And so I'm just wondering, I continue to be bothered by the amount of copying and postage because I think we're in 2020 and we should be much more electronic. And I'm just wondering if, Ed, if you can, you know, even if we, you know, do additional $5,000, is there any room in postage or copies that we, because that's also over the course of the year. It just bothers me that we copy so much and mail as opposed to do things electronically.
Actually, Matt and I took like 100 bucks from postage. It was close at the end of the year. As far as copies go, no. You've got departments that are using that machine all the time for different purposes, whether it be for at election time, you know, to do, you know, print items that are going out. I have not seen that particular item show a surplus since I've been here.
Yeah, but I'm asking, can we do things differently?
I mean, surely we've saved a little bit now because we're not getting any printed out packages for select board. That would save a few pages.
It saves a few pages, but like I say, you know, in, in general, all week long, there's somebody at that doing large copying jobs, so.
Maureen, I would, I would go around along with you, 5,000 from postage and 5,000 from legal and see where it goes two, three months from now. We'll have a chance to relook at it once we know better.
I do have, I do have a question about postage. With mail-in election this year, where's that money coming from? Are we getting more money from the state to subsidize those, nailing out those ballots and so forth? Or is that going to come from our town budget?
Good question.
Good question.
So that's why I thought cutting postage may not, I mean, depending upon what the answer is, might not be a viable alternative here. We may actually end up needing to supplement it.
But I guess, I guess the point is, let's not cut staffing right now until we know more. If we want to divide the 10,000 up into 10 accounts, I really don't care. I just don't want to create an issue with staffing right now until we find out more because, again, these people are the ones that are in the trenches generating the revenues and permits, the applications all the way up.
So I'm going to say something. I'm in full, I'm not in disagreement with you, John, at all. I just want to point out, I do want to point out a mathematical thing just to make sure that you're not overlooking this.
I know what you're going to say. The farther in we do it, the more it's going to cost us.
Yep, so if we go six months in and we got to cut 10 grand.
Yeah.
And people have already gotten paid for six months.
Yeah.
And it's $10,000 a person, just used for round numbers. We're going to have to cut two people to get to the 10 grand.
Yeah, I don't disagree with your acronym, but I've been doing budgets for, you know, 40 years. And to me, the staffing is the most important element of any budget. And to keep good staffing, and we've all said many times, we don't overpay these people. So to keep them there, because once we start losing these good people, we're not, we're not getting the experience that they have now. They, they save us a lot more than this $10,000 is going to save us.
I mean, like, like I said, I agree with you. I just want to make sure that everybody's understanding the math on this. Like, it's not, you won't be able to take the quarter later. You'll have to take a half or three quarters in order to make up for the money you already had.
Understood.
Yep. And just, just for my, my memory refresher here, the quarter was, we were talking furlough days, were we not?
Or layoff, I don't know the difference.
We were talking furlough for the people that stayed, the actual department heads. And cutting back on the admin, I believe, is what we talked about last night.
Correct, yeah, reducing their hours by 25%.
Yeah, so think of this, we're going to cut admins' hours and we're going to furlough the people that are supposed to do the additional work that the admins that we just cut back are supposed to do. You know, those, it doesn't add up.
Does anybody know, I'm sure someone knows, I'm sure Jen knows, what the daily payroll is so that we could look and say, well, how far do we have to go with this? You know what I'm saying? So that we could come up with, is it two days a person? Is it three days a person for furlough? Is it one, 10?
45% is one day.
Right, one of four.
Well, that.
That's for the admin. I'm talking about furloughing. We talk, we're not talking about furloughing any other employees?
Not at this time, no.
Not in the mix? But, but don't you think we should have some idea of what that would cost, just looking ahead a little bit?
We should definitely do that math, just planning ahead for when we, when the real cuts come.
Yeah.
Yep.
Can anybody propose additional cuts other than $10,000 from legal? We've already cut, and I'm, you know, we've, the average coming in, we're never exactly overs, underspent on legal. We've already cut, and I'm, you know, we've, the average coming in, um, we're never exactly overs, uh, underspent on, uh, legal.
Yeah, we never, we never underdraw that account. That's not an underdraw.
Yeah, we're not gonna need, we're not gonna need audit money anytime soon, right? Could we postpone that? I mean, cut that for now and with the idea that we've got to replenish it at some point?
No, we, we have to do an audit every year. It's in our bylaws.
I know, but we've just finished one, so it's not gonna happen until third or fourth quarter, right?
Yeah, but if you cut the money and can't replace it, then you can't do it and you don't meet the bylaw.
Yeah, and that, that would be, no, that, yeah, I wouldn't agree with that.
Scroll down on the general government, please.
Yeah, let's go down the line.
You've got, you've got selectmen expenses at 1,500 and the minutes for 1,500, you know, can't we cut some of that out? If, if we, somebody came up with a suggestion, which I hated, but I'm willing to do, if we keep the staff, if we start taking minutes, uh, you know, one meeting every so often, it's a lousy idea, but it saves staffing and I'm okay with it. Or maybe we get a volunteer to take minutes.
No, I mean, the only, the only true way to really solve that was that we rotate and then the, and the only person that's, uh, absolved from it is the chair. We rotate.
I don't think that's the only true way. I think if we get a volunteer, there's a lot of people out there who have great, you know, secretarial skills, clerical skills. Maybe at least short term, we can get somebody to volunteer. We gotta do things differently here. And by cutting, you know, two, three grand from there, that'll, that'll be a third of the way to, uh, saving these admins.
Um, Matt, can you scroll down, please, um, on general government, so I can just see what else is on, in this line?
Is that good? And can you see, everybody? Is it zoomed in enough?
Yeah, it's good.
And Rini, let me know if you want to hear from Jen Day on that, uh, spreadsheet you sent out.
But here, we, the position that is vacant, you're not talking about replacing that?
No. That doesn't account for the 10 grands. We, that, those positions need to remain unfilled at this time.
All right. Cause again, you're, you're talking about two departments, as, as John was talking, two departments are gonna be very hard hit with the, without having that type of support.
Yeah, I mean, I was talking about the two positions that were vacant because in Jen's, Jen's summary here, it'll cost like sixteen hundred dollars. I added that onto the roughly eighty five hundred.
You shouldn't do that for the purposes of this spreadsheet because the, those people are not currently hired, which means we don't have to pay unemployment on them, so we can take the full salary. You're gonna have to make up way more than 10 grand if you, if you, if you throw the two people that are currently not hired in those positions that are vacant into this model. You're, you're looking at probably 30 at least to find.
Okay, so let's go with the ones.
Right here, we're accounting for that as a ten thousand dollar cut. That's, that, I, I understand Jen's spreadsheet, but it accounts for the person being hired and the person's not hired.
Yeah. We talked about delaying hiring of this person that was gonna be shared between the town clerk and the assessor's office, right?
We accounted for, we accounted for not hiring the, uh, the assist, the assistant town clerk and the assistant, um,
Assessor.
Assessor.
Uh, assessor, yeah. This, this one right here. So we, we, we benefit, I'm sorry, we benefit from the, the full, uh, you know, um, ten thousand two hundred dollars and then down here, um, fifteen thousand three fifteen. If you go by Jen's spreadsheet, that accounts for them being hired and there being, there being a person currently in that position and us needing to pay unemployment. That, that is not the case with these two positions right now, so you're gonna have to make up a heck of a lot more than the, and just so, just to be clear, like, let's work off the same column here. I mean, Ed checked this today. We're, we're at 50% unemployment, not, not the 60% line. So we're, you know, we're, we're a column moved in from that. We, we're looking to try to find, at this point, ten thousand eight hundred dollars. There's some math in there that I have a little bit of questions with, um, but we can get to that. It's probably hundreds of dollars and not that big of a deal. But it's, right now, it's basically ten, ten, eleven thousand dollars that we're trying to find. If you put in, if you're, if you're talking about the assess, assessor, admin assistant and the town clerk assistant, you're, you're looking to add 10 to that and 15 to that. So you're, you're, you're looking to have to find, you know, 35, an additional 35 grand in savings if you're putting those positions in with ones that are already filled.
Yeah, if you go with just the 10, eight that we talked about at that 50% level on Jen's sheet, that's, that's what we, I think we need to find.
I don't disagree with you there. I, I, but I, I don't, I absolutely don't disagree with you there. And if we can find the 10 grand, I, I like your, I, I like, I like that idea. I just don't personally know where you're gonna, where you're gonna find it, but that's.
Let's, let's look at this and see what we can do, yeah.
Oh, um, tell me, um, sorry, Ed, but can you tell me what the copier line is?
Sure. It's the photocopyer lease supplies.
Okay, well, that's not that much anyway. I thought it was a lot higher. It was postage that was higher, but given the election situation without knowing, so we all just, you know, I got a postcard asking if I wanted to vote by mail. Uh, who paid the postage on that? Wasn't that Galvin's office?
Yeah.
Our secretary, yeah.
Yeah, it was.
But the application would have to be sent out, right, by our town clerk's office, is that correct?
Correct.
No, I just wanna, I, I've said it again, and I, I think if we're having ser-, you know, like, I worked for Place. I said it before, our CEO took a 25% cut in pay. All the senior leaders took 10%, um, 15%. I took a 10% as a director and there were many people furloughed. We don't want to furlough anybody, but, uh, the real world right now is that, uh, people, budgets are incredibly strapped and that people are getting laid off. We don't want to do it. And I'm fine restoring the 25%, but if we have further cuts going down the road, um, I don't know how it's avoidable. So I would like to suggest, um, some money come out of postage and some money come out of legal, but I'm uncomfortable with having ten thousand dollars come out of legal.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. And, and you know, Rini, I mean, I agree with you. These people come up and say they're taking a 25%, but somebody making 200,000, 250,000 dollars a year versus somebody making 30 or 40. And, you know, they can, they can take the cut at that level. The people that are making 40 have to take a cut. That's their living, you know?
Administrative assistants, where I work, were actually, um, furloughed and then, uh, laid off. So I know in terms of percentages and all that, Ed Gibson offered to take a 3,000 dollar cut in pay as a director. So I'm just saying that, um, I know that the higher paid people, it's usually a certain percentage. But the administrative assistants, um, were laid off and furloughed, uh, where I work. I'm, I'm, I'm all for, you know, keeping them as long as I can, but I'm just saying that if we get further cuts, uh, when we find out that the state aid is, if it's worse than what, um, it is right now, I don't know if it's, if it's gonna be avoidable, but I'm okay with putting it back in. I'm just not okay with all of it coming from legal.
So, do you mind if I make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion that we reduce postage account by five thousand dollars, reduce legal by five thousand dollars and keep on the assistant accountant, admin, clerk, uh, TA admin, highway admin, COA admin at the level that they're at now and not reduce them until we find out more on where the budget will be.
Which admins did you list?
They were in Jen's report. There was the.
Yeah, I see it. All right, fine. I got it in front of me. Fine.
Comes up with roughly 10,800 dollars. And like you said, Rini, when we find out, we find out we've gotta do what we need to do.
Okay, so John made a motion. Would someone like to second it?
I'll second it.
Further question, discussion?
I would still like to, I would still like to see the, a daily payroll cost so that we can look at those numbers in terms of, if we, you know, be prepared and have a plan in place if this goes south.
Well, you have it. Jen posted it. The hourly wage and the number of hours per week.
For everyone.
For all seven of those people.
No, I'm talking about everyone.
Oh, everyone. Okay.
If, if it goes as far south as we think it is, 10,000 dollars isn't gonna be a, a drop in the bucket.
Are we worried about the 800 dollar, uh, difference?
What are we talking about here?
10,806 dollars is what Jen came up with.
If you, if you want, just, just, just hold on a sec. We do need to worry about that. Um, but can I just, uh, I need to maybe ask Jen a question.
Can we do that in the middle of the vote, or?
Or can we, should we not do that?
Is Jen on the call?
Yeah, I can unmute her.
Does Jen have video?
Yep. She does.
Let's see. Yeah, she's got video.
Yeah.
Yeah, I got a question for you.
Jen, can you introduce yourself, please? Hi, Jennifer Day. I'm treasurer collector.
Hey, Jen, how you doing?
Good, how are you?
Good. Thanks you so much for sending this math to us.
You're welcome.
It makes a ton of sense and it, and it, I mean, it's, it, that, it, you know, ensures us that we're at least using the right numbers here and that the calculations weren't off. For, for every, every pers, every position, um, that was listed that's currently filled, so not the vacant positions, which I'll get to in a second. Everything checks out based on the math that we did at the previous meeting, with the exception of the council on aging wages.
Okay.
So my question there is, you know, when we were talking at the last meeting, and I know that you were shooting from the hip, so, so what you were trying to find this number during the meeting, I specifically remember it and I appreciate you digging for it. But my guess is, is that, um, right now, and, and we're going off the 50% column, okay? And for unemployment. So that column is the only discrepancy that I see with the numbers that are already in the spreadsheet. We accounted for last meeting a 420 dollar, uh, cut, which is the quarter of a year for the COA admin.
Yeah.
Cause we were basing that off of the salary, which is listed right here that you provided to me at that meeting. But in the spreadsheet, I'm seeing 998 dollars is, 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 uh, the cut for a quarter of a year. So I'm just kinda wondering did, what happened there?
So in the spreadsheet, I used, um, the actual hours on the PCF times her hourly rate. So what she would normally work, um, however, when I was on the prior meeting, I used the amount we actually paid her in fiscal year '20.
Okay.
Didn't account for, she, I know she took like five weeks on paid vacation, so it didn't account for those differences.
Okay, well, can I, I'm just gonna ask a follow-up question then. Their, their budget last year, um, doesn't allow them to, to, so, let me just, let me back up. So you provided her hourly rate, or the hourly, I wanna just stay agnostic here. So, um, you provided the hourly weight, you provided the number of hours weekly.
Yeah.
So my first question is, is that simple math? You multiply the hourly rate by the hours per week by 52 weeks a year to come up with an annual salary.
I did it by 52.2.
52.2, fine. It makes it worse. Um, so, so fif-, uh, let me, I, I don't wanna announce this, so hold on. Okay, so there is nowhere near enough money in their budget last year to pay for that position under those circumstances. It's like not even close.
But part of this is through the state grant, you know?
I'm trying to get into it right now so I can look at it. I'm having a hard time like getting into the remote access.
They, let me just, uh, chime in here. They also have a grant that supports in part some of their staff.
Part of that's paid by the grant, yeah. So that's probably where I went wrong in the new spreadsheet. I didn't consider the grant. Cause I believe that even the assistant part of her hours is paid out of the grant.
Mm-hmm.
Right. That's where, that's where that's off.
Yeah, this one beyond 25%. This wiped the whole position out.
Yeah. I was doing it quick today and I totally didn't, um, add in the grant.
That's okay, okay. But that explains it, right? That, that explains why my number's so much lower than yours because I'm, I'm working off of a different base number.
So we basically restore the numbers to original on those lines.
I get it. In, in, in that case, though, the 800, the 800 definitely matters, so, um.
So, uh, let me amend my motion that we split the 10,806 dollars and, let me see if I can get this right.
Thirty cents.
Thirty cents between postage and legal. How's that?
What do you wanna do?
Split the total of 10,806 dollars and, what'd you say, 31 cents?
Thirty cents.
Thirty cents between legal and postage.
So I was, I was trying to go in to see how much of our postage budget we spent last year, like how much was left over because I don't think there was a whole lot. I mean.
No, I think it was like 700 bucks left.
I didn't, I looked at that. That was.
Yeah, and, um, I mean, yeah, only 12,000 dollars about that. I think we budgeted that last year. I'm not on the spreadsheet to look at.
I'm encouraging people to do things differently. This is 2020. You don't have to copy. It's not good to copy. You don't have to post.
Yeah, but we spent 15, we spent 1,500 dollars every time we mail out tax bills. That's 4,500 dollars just for that. Um, the lease agreement is 500 and something dollars each quarter. So I just don't think there's 5,000 dollars to be cut unfortunately from that budget.
There is, and it's not responsible to do this. The, the, I, we looked at the revenues on this. This, this, this account goes right up to 15,000 and it looks like at the end of the day, like, let's be serious here. And I know that we're, we're struggling and I think that that's, uh, valid and valiant and, and, and we're trying our best here. But the, the money that we need to come up with is not in photocopy or paper. I can promise you that. It doesn't cost a lot of money to print.
There is the option of trying, I don't know how we would go about it, but I know other towns have decided instead of doing three mailings per year for tax bills, they do two. So they do the August and November together and they do the February and May together. That could save some time and then it could save like 1,500 bucks in postage.
Could you do the water bill similarly?
Um, that would be up to the water department. They pay for that postage, so that's out of the enterprise fund.
I frankly like more community input into that decision. I'm just concerned about senior citizens and others that may find it a tremendous hardship. So, um.
Yeah, it was, I was in East Hampton when they switched it and, you know, it was, it wasn't an easy switch the first year. Definitely, you know.
We were just talking about mailing the two bills together, not paying them both together.
Yeah, just mailing them together, but, um, even when we mail out the preliminary together, the August and November, and we've been doing it that way for years, you know, people forget the November payment because it was mailed out back in June. So now if we do the same thing with February and May, and then they're missing May and it's some, it's something new, it, you know, it's upsetting to the taxpayers. It's some.
I, I know, but like Rini says, we gotta think differently sometimes, you know?
No, I know. That's why I brought it up.
Yeah, it could be an educational thing. I mean, I think, you know, having two, two mailings instead of three would help a little bit. Just looking at, at the, um, the report we got last week, I think, uh, from Vicky, the expenses through 629, there was about 988 dollars left in postage at that point in time.
I, I, yeah, I know that, Chris, but when she was on, online with us, the numbers that she was telling us, because she had a more recent report than the one we were looking at, were much higher, what, what Jen's talking about. Cause they, they did their year-end thing. Is that right, Jen?
I can't get in, I'm trying to look right now to see what the end was and I'm having a hard time getting in.
Can I just ask a question? Are you allowed to, to email tax bills out to people who request them? Lots of companies, you know, would rather, will allow you to, um, get your bills that way. That's more efficient for them and certainly for people who want it, you could save.
We have to mail them to the homeowner?
We can email them to the homeowner.
Yeah, we, by law, we have to mail them to each homeowner, so they don't.
Yeah, because.
They don't go to mortgage companies, um, just to the, they go to the homeowners.
That, that makes sense, cause it, yeah, cause that's, you gotta have a pay, yeah. Do we, do we duplicate mail these to, like, and I guess what I, um, do we just send them to the homeowner or do they also go to the, to the mortgage holder?
We only send them to the homeowner if a mortgage holder requests them, then they get charged a duplicate bill fee of a dollar fifty.
Who does?
The, the, um, the bank.
The bank gets charged if the bank wants it.
Correct. Most of the banks will electronically, um, get the tax bills they need out of the system, but if they actually require a paper bill, then they are charged a dollar fifty for each one.
Okay, good. So, so then next question is, is do you know who, who the, that subset is? Like who, the mort, where the mortgage lender is? Okay, good. So, so then next question is, is do you know who, who the, that subset is? Like who, the more, where the mortgage lender is asking for the bill? Do you know who, who, do you have an account? Do you, do you know who that aligns with in terms of people? And I guess what I'm asking is, if we're sending it to the mortgage lender, if we're sending it to the mortgage lender already, then why do we need to send it to the homeowner? And, and the mortgage lender's paying for it even better?
We have to send it to each homeowner. I mean, really, the homeowner is supposed to get it to their mortgage company, and I think when that doesn't happen is when the mortgage companies request them.
Can we change our rate to the, to the bank and double it?
It's a dollar 50. Can we, I, I don't know if.
If you double it, though, you pay for postage for, for everybody to get their mail. Can we double it?
Can we double the fee we charge the bank?
Charge them three bucks every time we send, every half time we have to send them a bill.
But you just said that they get most of it electronically through the system, Jen.
They do. There's not, you know, we don't make a whole lot of money each, off of duplicate bill fees. I would have to look, but I would say maybe it ends up being 150 a year, 200 a year.
I don't want to spend, I mean, you know, I know, I don't want to spend too much money, uh, time on this. I mean, we can't take five grand from this line, so like, I mean, unless, unless we have a, unless we have a monumental idea on postage here, we're not pulling more than, we're, we're pulling nothing from it, honestly. Like, we, we, we spend that line right to the.
I just find it's interesting to let the mail out all the tax bills four times a year where people can pay the taxes online. It just seems like archaic, frankly. So any other? What's that?
We mail them three times a year right now and two is an option that we can look into.
How much is it?
That's $1,500 to save.
We mail about 3,000, it would be about $1,500.
So why don't we take 1,500 out of postage? Let's just try this.
Okay, now, we, we have a, a motion in a second. Can we adjust it now or do we have to cancel and come back in and sort of make sure whatever we do is accurate?
I think you can amend your motion if you want. If you, you already suggested $5,000, so I, I think we should probably either cancel the motion or come up with an additional amount to make 1080.
I'd like to cancel the motion.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Okay, so if we're taking $1,500 from postage and we're taking $5,000 from legal, then at this point we are still short in order to restore the 25% for administrative assistance. So are there any other suggestions? Ed, do you have any suggestions?
What expenses do we have for the select board? Not the minutes line, the one above it, isn't that 1,500 bucks too?
$910 of that is our MMA dues.
How much?
$910 of that is our MMA dues.
So if we grab $500, that would work for now?
Another 500.
Yeah. That'll give us, that'll get us up to.
Well, I'll start writing down this math. I'm not going to go ahead and change the spreadsheet until we figure out the math. I'll write it down, so SB expenses.
Yeah, I'm writing it with you. Select board expenses, 500, postage, postal 15, and legal 5.
So that'd be another 300 in your selectmen expenses.
No, I'm talking about taking an extra 500 out to make it 1,000.
No, no, there's already two, 200 there in that amount required to cut budget per select board, 716.
Yeah, he wants to drop the balanced budget line item down to 1,000 bucks, so take another 500 from it.
Right.
Oh, I see, you went from 17 to 15, gotcha.
It would be cut 700 bucks total.
Yeah.
So we need $3,860.
If we're keeping all the admin positions at the 100% pay, is it possible to cut out the pay for the minute taker at the select board meetings as normally the person that works as the assistant to the town administrator in municipalities would do that as part of their position?
Off of the film, off of the video during the day?
Or just go to the meetings. A lot of times they attend the meetings. It's part of their hourly duties.
Right. I still have to pay the hourly.
Increase that hourly.
Maybe hourly, great.
Man, I'm okay with the person doing it in the office during regular business hours from the video.
Yeah, I mean, whatever, you know, what works, but.
Is that possible, Ed?
Well, you, you do leave a gap because you don't cover executive sessions.
Uh, one of us could take that.
He could.
Yeah.
I would be happy with doing that. So with that in mind, can we take the selectmen minutes expenses and bring it down to zero?
If you wanted to. Okay, I wrote that down.
So we're at 8.5.
I just want to comment about that. I just feel that I don't want to delay the approval of minutes. We have bylaws against that, and I also don't want to spend, uh, spend a town administrator's salary to take minutes. So I think that, John, if you know somebody who would be willing to volunteer, I think that's probably better than having, tying up an administrative assistant. She's not in the office a whole lot anyway, and these meetings lately have been five hours long. So to pay her to watch a five-hour meeting during the day doesn't seem very cost-effective.
Yeah, I, I, like I said, I think that, oh, it's, you know, unfortunately, it's got to be somebody that's already at these meetings, and of course, all five of us already are, and I know we all hate this idea, but like, I won't say it again, you know what I already said. I think that the chair puts in a ton of time into this, into these meetings, or at least I know that the chair does, and I, I know that we do too. I'm not, I'm not discounting that, but like, I mean, the only way we can get rid of that, like, we can't have Ed doing minutes. Like, we all know that, and you know that that's where this is going to default to.
All right, but we don't want to do that. One of the things is, though, if the town administrator or assistant admin does these, by saving that money, we're saving her 25% of her position. That's what we're trying to say, but she's in that.
She's going to spend a whole day a week, though, doing those minutes.
I mean, I, I don't believe I'm going to say this, but if we want to rotate it and try it for a while, we each take one, as, as long as, Rainey, you can say we're not going to have six-hour-long meetings every time.
Well, at this rate, this one's going to be at least six, so can we, decisions around $3,800? You know, we all put in a tremendous amount of time here. I would love to be able to find a volunteer if we're going to take that money out of there. Otherwise, we know that it's going to fall to Ed Gibson, and after spending, I mean, I have a full-time job. I have, you know, like to then sit down on a weekend or a night that I don't have a meeting and do minutes is just not going to be doable. I'm sorry. Not going to be doable.
Okay, well, let's see what else we can.
Yeah, can we go down the line here a little bit more?
Why don't you take another 200 bucks from admin expenses, please?
Okay, I wrote it down.
Okay. Did, the election registration expenses, it's 11.5. Is there any room do we go in there to get a few bucks?
What was the question? This one right here, Ed. 11.5, election registration expenses.
So that may be the postage, part of it.
Is that the printing of the ballots and that kind of stuff, or?
Yeah.
That's printing of the ballots, the, the, uh, the, the electronic election card. It's all of those things.
By tying, by tying local and state election together this year, is that going to save us any money?
Well, don't forget we have a presidential election too, so that usually.
Lucy's saying it would. Well, don't, don't forget you're actually tying the election from the previous fiscal year into this, so we need to save money with it. We've actually technically added an election.
Okay.
So you can't accrue any money from last year's budget for that expense?
No.
Gets back into free cash, I believe. Telephone, gas and electric, those are big numbers. Building expenses?
How about, you know, something on the gas and electric, anything?
I mean, if you grab a thousand dollars from each of them, you're going to be there, you know?
We, we, we checked these, though, in terms of spending.
Yeah, we, we already, we already reduced the gas and electric for town hall by $2,000.
Yeah, yeah.
Like, they offered the, they offered the savings. Remember, this, this column B was what the last year was. This is the request. They already offered those $2,000 savings. And building expenses were taken last year despite an ask of higher.
It's, this is tough. I remember we're only talking about doing this for a few months until we figure out what we really got to do, so.
Right, until you figure out you got more.
But, right, but I mean, we're, if we have to do that, you know, it ain't going to be pretty, no matter how we look at it.
No.
EMD expenses, what do, what do we buy, what do we buy here?
Could, could be signage. Could, could be a lot of different things.
So what are we up to, Matt? How much are we up to now?
Uh, in terms of the lines that we cut here, uh, 2, 7.
230, 60.
9, 9.
What was that?
What?
We're up to 9.
How's that?
1,000.
Okay, so we got 28.
I need another 1,800.
Or 1,800. So Ed, where do you suggest we get about 1,800?
We can't do anything out of the pig programming, right?
No, because that, that's actually just a match from the revenues.
Right.
Comes in one side, goes out evenly on the other.
But what do you expect to get from the Board of Health?
Well, take, take a thousand dollars from EMD, the emergency management expenses. So you got 750 left.
Yeah.
Okay.
So what do we need? 800 and 600?
800.
So I come back to what do you expect from the Board of Health since we haven't heard from them yet?
Well, we, we served them a number that was equitable with the other departments.
And they're in a different category, though, that we're trying to, you know?
Yeah, well, the, well, in the category does matter to a degree.
So, but let's gamble and take 800 dollars more from gas and electric in the town hall.
Okay, so, um, if folks want me to make those changes.
Or take another eight from the legal expenses and make it 58 less. We were going to 10.
Not a bad idea.
That's a mistake.
Yeah, I would.
A big time mistake.
Uh, Matt, you have the list, right?
I do. You want me to run it down?
Yes, please. And actually, if you can, if someone would be willing to do this as a motion, if everyone's in agreement, so go ahead, Matt.
Um, what we are proposing to do to save the $10,800 is take, okay, hold on a second here, I'm sorry. Wait a second, guys, I gotta, I gotta just do this again, because I, I think, uh, because we're not doing minutes. Uh, we're still 1,800 short. I'll run down the list so that you all know. We were going to do 500 from an additional 500 out of SB expenses. We left the minutes alone, which was the number that was throwing me off. I, I had that in there. Um, we were doing 1,500 off of postage. 5,000 off of legal. 200 off, an additional 200 off of admin expenses. Um, 1,000 off of emergency management expenses and 800 off ga, gas and electric.
What does that come to?
It comes to, I'll tell you, I'm just doing it again. Comes to 9,000 even. Need 1,800 bucks.
So if we, if we went back to the minutes and took 500 dollars off for now, that'll, that'll be something. Again, we just need to piece it together till we get a couple months down the road. Is everybody okay with that? 500 for minutes?
Thought if it ends up landing in Ed Gibson's lap. If you want to volunteer for minutes, I'm good with that.
Yeah.
We got a thousand dollars still in there.
Okay.
Now, Ed, who's taking the minutes now?
Basically, I take notes from the meetings and then either Kathy or Judy is, uh, transcribing them from, uh, the video.
So we're paying her to go through the video right now?
When, when it's Kathy, yes. When it's Judy, it's done during business hours.
So we have 9,500. We need 1,300 more. Can we look at building expenses? Because that's a moving target. We don't know until we know on that.
You, we barely cover our contractual amounts. There's really nothing left in this building for that. We already had problems this week. We've lost a sensor because of the high heat up in the attic that shut down an air handler, and I've got to have people come in and work on our fire pit. We don't plan for any of that stuff. There's no money for any of that stuff.
So we reduce anything in telephone? It's 8,000.
It was basically spent just about to the end, the last two years.
Understood, but we need to make adjustments on these later in the year anyway, so. This isn't cast in stone. It's just trying to get us to where we can have a balanced budget and get forward to two or three months, just taking the decisions.
Hang on a second, let me go get my last expense review.
Yeah, guys, I mean, here's the risks that we're running here, and I understand the reason why we're trying to do it, so we don't need to keep chatting about it here, but like, we're going to have to do a very good job of remembering what we're doing here. Um, we're all, we'll also have this budget to, to show for it, but, um, and I'll make notes on it, but, I mean, when the real cuts come in a few months, we can't do this exercise again where we're just like robbing out of these accounts that we know are level with the, the amount that we pay every year. Like, we're, we're pulling money out of legal expenses. We know we do 30 grand in that. We're talking about gas and electric and building expenses. We know that we either overdraw or hit those accounts on the head. Like, I mean, this, 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 this exercise is turning into an exercise of like not, we're not being, we're not being true to ourselves here. We're, we're lying to ourselves.
Well, I mean, my opinion, once we get the final number, if it's as bad as we think, it's either going to be an override or operational stabilization, because that number's going to be such a large number, you know? There's nowhere else to go for. We're not going to be able to nickel and dime departments again.
Well, end up having staff cuts. That's what's going to end up happening.
Yes.
Yeah.
That's, that's why I'm, you know, I'm not going to say it again.
I mean, it's, it's worth just, it's worth just mentioning from, well, no, because I guess I don't know this to be factually correct, but the, the, the cuts to the other, I mean, we're working on general government here, but like, I mean, the cuts to the other department, like, my, my, my guess is that that's going to affect people, but.
Let me ask you a question. If we balance it today and then we find out two, three months from now we need an extra $200,000, is everybody in favor or opposed of taking some or all of that from operational stabilization?
Yeah, that's, we don't need to have that discussion, though, now. Those are, those are like ifs and buts and hypotheticals.
Well, this is ifs and buts, you know, we don't know that it's going to be a lot worse. We think it is, but we don't really know until we know. It's like getting your, your tax bill. You don't know till you know.
Yeah, which is why we're not trying to balance off of a ridiculous cut. We're just trying to basically balance off of something that's like.
Yeah.
Take 200 dollars from the telephone account.
200 from telephone?
Yeah.
We're down to 1,100, I think.
Yeah.
Brother. Any savings on the town report?
We've got to do one for the town meeting, don't we?
Yeah. That was last year.
What about this?
Well, that's, that's the expenses we've had for Concom. It's the first time we've actually had some money. Well, that's, that's the expenses we've had for Concom. It's the first time we've actually had some money to do anything with for the various expenses we have related to all of the trail work, et cetera. We've given up the idea of the conservation agent, which is what we were really hoping to have, was a, you know, part-time person. I'd really rather keep that handy.
Yeah, I would say, no offense, but if, if it helps us keep the staff taking eleven hundred dollars from it.
But, you know, some of the other staff, John, I understand, but some of the other staff are gonna be hit too. I mean, we look at the cuts that these other department heads have done. A lot of it came from wages, if I read it right. I mean, we're not, we're not, you know, I don't know how we can sort of pretend that we're protecting some and not protecting others. I mean, I, you know, I know what you're trying to do and I don't disagree with it, but I, I think this is not becoming a predictive, uh, discussion for, you know, the hour that it's taken us to get here.
Well, if it saves health benefits for two people, it saves their jobs, I'm, I'm okay with the timeframe. It's, it's just difficult taking it just from this section, you know?
Yeah.
And we have to look at if, if the benefits get rolled back in, that's gonna increase the number we're gonna have to make up.
Yeah.
I think it's already in the budget.
Okay, it's, you know, it's the original number we were working from.
Okay.
How about assessor consultants?
Yeah, that's how they do their valu- valuations. So, that's a money loser if we don't utilize that.
Can we go back to the health department? Uh, they're gonna come, they need to come up with something. It's out of the category, but can we just take the eleven hundred from there and see what they come up with?
Well, then you'd be asking them for an increase over what we've already asked them.
And you ask them for what, eight hundred and some dollars?
Yeah.
So we'll put that in.
Um, well, well, okay, I mean.
It's a different category.
So, I mean, I can. Okay.
I think we keep the same percentages in departments. I think that's what's important to morale and culture and parity.
Sure, you know, um, I don't know how to say this, but it's worth just kinda pointing this out. I mean, um, all of the admins are in general government, which is where we're trying to pull this money, with the exception of one that's in highway. And the calculations for the balance across the departments accounted for this. So, you know, technically speaking, if we restore this position, this amount gets eliminated here and probably should be dropped down into here if we're, if we're, if we're doing a rebalancing act. Does that make sense to you, folks?
Mm-hmm.
Like, this amount, if we're gonna restore this position, that amount needs to go down to wages.
Yeah, in order to keep the same percentages.
Yes. Otherwise, then that would be an imbalance.
Okay, we're spending a lot of time in the general government. Um, I guess we have to, you know, come up with some firm idea.
That makes up twenty-three hundred if we wanna do it that way. Is that what you're thinking, John? I mean, we're gonna have to do that anyway. That's.
Uh, that's fine. I mean, Randall, if he's on the call, I don't, I don't wanna swipe him, but unless he's okay with it, but it helps, you know, admins all across the board, including his, so. If he's okay with eleven hundred dollars more.
He says he's fine.
Okay, thanks, Randall.
Okay, so, hold on a second.
Let it review and then that, um, hopefully will become a motion and we can move on to the next department.
Yeah, well, just hold on a second here. So, I mean, really, what we're trying to find then is ten eight oh six. Six minus two, two, seven, six point nine. Uh, we're basically trying to find like eighty-five hundred, eighty-five hundred and change. So.
What?
After taking.
Yeah, because this, this number isn't going away and it's included in the admin, it's included in the ten thousand eight hundred, but in order to, this department to balance with the others, this amount has to stay in as a, as a deduction out of the budget, which means I'm just gonna have to drop it down into highway wages. It's gonna increase that amount by, by the same amount. Does that make sense to everyone?
At this point, yeah.
Yeah. So this one quarter of the admins, that wasn't a cut that preceded the other roughly in one percent cut?
What?
So if you were taking the, uh, the one quarter of the admin twenty-five percent reduction in pay and benefits, that was, that was, um, was that done after the other departments had the three percent and one percent cut?
No, so i- if you're asking me what the, what the equality was based off of, it was based off of the entire exposure to the department, which in this case included the admin.
Okay, alright.
Because that admin, that admin supports that department and only that department, so it is a cost to the department. You know, basically, what was included in, in the exposure to the department was, basically, we were looking at cutting wages, wages and expenses. Well, that is a wage in that department.
Okay.
So, like, yeah, that would.
I get it.
That would have to happen. So we're looking at eighty-five hundred. So let me just run down the list here and then, Ed, please chime in on what you don't wanna do, but SB expenses, five hundred. Postage, fifteen hundred, which I'm not in favor of. Legal, five thousand. Admin expenses, two hundred. Emergency management expenses, a thousand. Gas and electric, eight hundred. Minutes, five hundred. And telephone, two hundred. We're up to ninety-seven hundred. We need to, we could take off, uh. Call it twelve hundred bucks. So if it were me, I'd, I don't know what's important here. I, Jen, please chime in, like, I, I think for me, it's the.
Looking at my expense line and now that we are banking with the Stanton Savings Bank, I do save quite a bit in mileage. So you can take five hundred from my, um, expense line. I don't, and I think we should be okay with that.
The treasurer, treasurer expenses?
Treasurer collector expenses.
Where is it?
I just compared the prior nineteen to twenty and it looks like I saved about five hundred in mileage.
Thanks, Jen.
Thank you, Jen.
Yep.
Well, now we can, now we can eliminate seventeen hundred from this list.
However.
You don't wanna, you don't wanna drop postage, do you, Jen?
No, um, I am nervous about postage, but I need to look into, um, ma- doing the tax bill mailing twice a year as I'm not sure if it's something that we can just do on our own with it, without it being approved somewhere. I don't know if there was anything on that. I would have to look.
Yeah, I wasn't really comfortable with that one. I, I personally prefer to restore postage and that'll about call, that'll, that'll about do it.
I'm also nervous about, um, and I know this is a little different and it's, and it's not anything, it's not good news, but the assistant town clerk position, that not being filled at all because if Lucy is out, if Lucy gets sick, um, that's the person that I go to to have any notes sealed, bonds sealed. Anytime I do a mailing, I need to get, um, an affidavit notarized. So if anything happened where Lucy couldn't report, then there's no one there that can do that work.
There's no way, there's no way to solve for this, I don't think. That's.
I know. I just wanted to point that out because that person normally would replace her and do what she does. And it's happened where our town clerks have become ill and the assistant town clerk had to step in and run the office and we wouldn't have anyone there, but.
Is someone that can be assigned those duties, um, either, even in the interim basis?
I'm not sure, but Lucy might know more on that.
Yeah.
It's, I don't know if she's trying to.
I know the assessor has to use her a lot too for notarized things. Okay, I think at this point, I think we'll move on. I think if we've come up with the amount of money, I think, Jen, you can certainly look into the postage I'd want. I mean, the tax, if we can get a little bit of, uh, you know, community involvement or sense about that, um, that would be helpful, but. And, and by the way, you might, you send it out a couple of times a year, but they're not due, um, you know, they're still due four times a year. They just.
Still the same due dates, yes.
Yeah, okay. So, um, so that's important. Um.
Okay.
All right.
Restore the postage, because that, that was a problem, and do the rest of them. Are you okay with that?
So, can you run down where we're. Let's put some, just go put some numbers in, yeah?
You want me to just put the numbers in and see how it goes?
Yes, please.
Okay.
And coming back to emailing the tax bills for people who don't have a mortgage, who could have their tax bill mailed direct, emailed directly to them, could that be an option?
There is a law on that and it has to be something that's approved, um.
Yeah, it's gotta be voluntary and requested.
What? I missed that, Ed. What'd you say?
It's gotta be voluntary and requested by the.
Correct. We would also have to get different software that would enable us to, um, email them.
Oh, good.
So, yeah. That would probably cost more than what we save then.
Well, I think it's worth looking into. There are other issues besides that in terms of paper, in terms of the environment.
Yeah, people do have to accept it. We ha- we are, um, required to mail them a actual paper bill unless they say otherwise. And right now, the software we use for printing the bills, we don't have the option just to print, you know, a few of them. You either have to print one by one or you have to print them all.
While Matt's doing that, do certifications happen regularly every year for people or is it kind of staggered? Those that need to have their certifications renewed?
Once they have them, they have them.
So what?
Once they're certified, they're eligible for their certification.
Okay, so, but, so we pay for the renewal, or?
So right now Martha is the only one certified and that is being, using that line, so she's using a thousand dollars. I'm not even sure if I'm going to be able to test this year because the Treasury Collector School canceled all their classes and still hasn't decided whether or not they're gonna allow anyone to take the test.
Mm-hmm.
So that's a thousand dollars that might not happen.
Is that an option to reduce that line?
If I ended up testing and passing, then it would have to be changed, but, um, because it's in our bylaw to pay out if you're certified. But as of right now, they haven't said if we're able to take the test or not and it's, we're supposed to take it in August. And there's been no comment on that, so I'm not, I don't think it looks good that we're going to be able to test. And then as far as the other thousand would be for Vicky, and I'm not sure what the status is on that.
And the current line is how much is it?
Three thousand, I believe.
Two thousand.
Three thousand.
So it's possible that it could be reduced to one thousand and then maybe, you know, money would have to be transferred in if certifications were obtained.
Yeah.
Correct.
If, yeah, if classes were to happen, yeah.
So if we have the money that we need, I'll be glad to reintroduce a motion reading.
Let's see what we got here first.
We are balanced. Right now.
Okay.
Oh, good.
If we do whatever, I, I, sorry, Jen, I wasn't, I was doing this, so I, if we're gonna make any other changes, it's gonna have to be a, uh, a debit credit scenario. Take somewhere, we get back to somewhere else.
Yeah. Yeah. Can we look at general fund, just see what you did, Matt, so we can go through it? Sorry.
Yep.
So all the cuts of the, the, the staff are changed, okay, yeah.
Yep, so, this is back to zero. Uh, Ed's admin, um, town accountant admin. Uh, this still has to stay out, not hired, and we need the full benefit of that. Um, ju- treasurer admin here. Uh, this position is not hired, so full, full benefit there of not rehiring immediately. Um. And I'll go through that in a second, but then I pulled out, um, the admin down here in highway, zero, and added the amount, the amount to here. So if you wanna go through it, this is what we ended up coming up with, which we added an additional, we took this from two hundred, select board expenses from two hundred dollar cut to a seven hundred dollar cut. So now we have a thousand bucks. That covers our, um, our dues. Um, selectmen minutes, we cut five hundred dollars, so we're gonna have to go on a rotating schedule here. Somebody's gonna have to take minutes every month or something like that, like one person a month.
Now, if Jen just said we could cut some money from the certification fund, can we put a little of that back in that line?
Where is the certification fund?
I'd like to put. The third line down, third line down.
Tell me again?
Right there, top of the page, certifications stipends.
Okay, what can I do with it?
So you can reduce it by.
Sorry.
So, Jen?
There's only one person actually certified right now, so we could cut it down to the one thousand dollars, but then we would have to transfer money in if the other two employees obtain their certification.
Okay.
I mean, we only need five hundred for this, like, minutes, so.
I'm not sure what the accountant status is on that, if she's able to test this year or not, um.
Can you give me three thousand, twenty-five hundred, Matt, and add back fifteen hundred into minutes, you know?
Oh, the stipends has to be at least a thousand to pay for the one.
Right, it's still twenty-five hundred, Jen.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you only took five hundred from it?
Yep.
Yeah. She's saying, she's saying take a thousand, which is, each person is a thousand.
She'd have to find somewhere to put it back.
So where do you wanna put the five hundred back? Do you guys wanna put it back into telephone, legal, select board expenses? Those are the, gas and electric?
Legal seems to be.
Did you already put back into postage?
We did. I didn't deduct postage at all.
Yeah, put it in legal.
That was at Ed's discretion from before.
Um, Ed, could you please unmute, um, Martha?
Hi, Martha Lee Me, assessor. Um, so I was trying to get, um, noticed because now that I, you've taken my admin assistant, there will be no training, no additional, um, fees for meetings for that person. So I was willing to give up five hundred from my expense line. I don't know where we're at. I was trying to keep track of all the numbers, so I didn't know if they had balanced prior to that or if that helps.
Well, it definitely helps. Right now, we're, uh, probably underfunding some lines, but currently in our math, we are up by five hundred.
Okay.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
So, um. If it, if it, if I'm to make a comment here, the ones that we've, that we've cut from that we probably shouldn't have at this point in time would be legal, an additional five grand, we're not gonna come up with that. Gas and electric, eight hundred. Uh, we just restored the minutes, correct?
Yep.
Uh, telephone, two hundred. We shouldn't have robbed gas and electric and we shouldn't have robbed telephone at this point. Those are the ones that we robbed that we.
So if, if you take a thousand, if you take a thousand out of stipends instead of five hundred and then put that back into gas and electric?
Well, at this point, let me just tell you where we are. Uh, we're eight, eighty-five over. I could restore gas right now.
I think I put it into legal first.
Would you?
Yep.
I'll, I'll go along with the whole thing. I'll go along with the whole thing going to legal too.
I think that's true too. We're taking too much from there. So, we good with that?
Yep. Does that include what Martha just said or is that just the remaining amount?
It includes what Martha just said. I did that right here.
Martha, thank you.
Okay, legal.
Legal.
85.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention that it's always a case of bad timing. The fact that there are two positions that haven't been filled, obviously you don't want to remove people, but to have departments be hit because of the timing of a position being vacant is a very unfortunate circumstance. It's the same thing that happens when people's contracts are up. So I just want to say that it's, you know, this isn't over and I'm hopeful that even when we relook at this, when we know final numbers, that we may be able to, at that point, you know, relook at this. So it's not a done deal for the year. It's just a starting point so we don't negatively impact an individual. This whole exercise we've just gone through for over an hour is to preserve the full benefits and hours of our administrative assistance for now.
I think Rini's right. These departments are being disproportionately affected. Just being just like we're still just depending on timing.
Yeah. We've got to relook at it. But for the meantime, I'd like to make a motion that we fully fund the five positions we have spoken about with the changes that we made that Matt can list out if you want to hear them separately to put it on record.
I think we can just, can't we just do it as one motion for?
Yeah.
The entire, are we going to do a motion for each section of the budget? Or are we going to do it as a final budget at the end?
I thought we needed a motion to change that, but if we don't, then we can wait till the end.
Okay. I think you can remove your motion possibly.
Okay, so I'll rescind the motion, hold off.
Why don't we just do it at the end? Because if we have to go back and look at any department, we, you know, we don't want to have to, you know.
Yeah, that's fine.
Another one.
Yeah. One motion at the end.
Okay.
That will save the person doing the minutes. A lot of time.
I hope so.
Okay, so are we good?
Yep.
I think we are.
All right, so we're down to police. We got a copy of that back from Chief Ellingsworth. And so I'm going to record the numbers that were issued back to us. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're get it. We're trying to come up with a total of 44,000, so we just want to make sure that it adds to that. Okay.
Good.
Now, could you say what the range of, it's a pretty tight range, but what percent are we talking about per department?
Yeah, we are, we are, everybody is between 4 and 4.5% basically.
Okay, and they're cuts and it's equal in department, so that was the intention?
That was the intention. I mean, the, you know, the, they're, yeah, I mean, for the most part, everybody's between 4 and 4.5. There is a high watermark in general gov of, well, it just crept up even more. Hold on. Well, I mean, I'll do it later, but it, you know, general gov's at like 6.5 and police is at like 3.7.
Okay. Okay, so are we all set with police, with the recommendations from Chief Ellingsworth?
Yeah, and just a question, last, at the last meeting, he offered up 14,000, right? And that's, that's been changed around into this new formula now?
Yeah, he offered this number and this number here, but they were, they amounted totally to 14,000. They've now, we've moved them around, but it's 15 now in these two and the rest is from here and here.
Okay, so we were asking him for an additional 30,000 compared to what he had asked, what he had already offered us?
Yes.
Okay, just want to be clear. Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Chief. Do we, any other questions or do you want to move to fire EMT ambulance?
I don't have any questions.
No, that's good.
Okay, so fire. Ed, if I'm, if I'm, if I'm reading this response back, my guess is that the 25 should be equally split between fire department wages and EMT wages?
No, no, he sent it along to take them all from EMT wages.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Yeah, he said that was the only account that really, depending on the number of calls, might have some discretion and and that's where he would transfer out to cover some of his other expenses at the end of the year.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief Workman. Any questions about fire EMT? Okay, ready to move on to education?
Yep. Education, they sent us theirs, is 40. And since they only have one line, that's where it's coming from.
And the school committee did meet, who does have access to all the line items on the local school budget? And so does anybody, Matt, you're the liaison, did you want to say anything about that?
Yeah, sure. I mean, they met last night, you know, at the request of the select board. The meeting was long and it was solely surrounding this topic. It went on for several hours. They went through their budget in the same way that we did, line by line. They argued back and forth. You know, I kind of mostly, for the most part, observed, other than the fact that I chimed in a couple of times. And John Lumbro did a great job running the meeting as well in that basically we're trying to get to a unified frontier at town meeting so that we're not, you know, so that we're kind of all one team. You know, at one point in time, the board was going towards no cuts at all and couldn't find it. And they managed to figure this, they managed to figure this out. It was seemingly just as painful as the process that we're going through, really now, for three meetings running.
I also sat in on that meeting. I didn't, I didn't talk at all, but I thought, you know, I thought they're, I thought they did a great job. I think they saw themselves as, you know, not the school versus anything else, but part of, and I think that in itself to me was the great accomplishment. And so, yes, I think John handled the meeting very well.
I mean, they're dealing with a lot of, they're dealing with a lot of excess expenses here, like that are, that it's not clear where this money's coming from, extra computers, one-to-one computers, PPE. Like, yeah, they're going for cares, but that, none of that is crystal clear. So they're, they're just as worried as we are about what's about to come here in the next couple of months.
Right.
And they're, they're in a six-figure, they're in multiple six-figure worries, just as much as we are over the next few months.
But the whole thing, none of it was adversarial and that, that will help us all, if we all take that approach to this situation, we'll be in a lot better shape.
Yep.
Is John or anybody online that would like to say anything or can we?
That's going to enjoy.
Would you like me to unmute, John?
I would. I just want to correct a statement that I made before he corrected me. It was spirited debate, not arguing.
Very good, you're learning. A spirited discussion.
Evening, John Lumbro, Chair of the South Hampton School Committee. You know, I agree with everything that Matt said. We went through the line by lines and we have some placeholders where we think we can make cuts. I mean, the good thing on our side is if our power bill comes in higher than what we think it's going to be, we can shift and find somewhere else in there to try and cut it. But we took, you know, we took the 40,000 that you asked us and we're going to figure out a way to make it work on our end to try to, hopefully at the end of this exercise, have a unified approach to town meeting and just make it go smoother for the next round.
Great.
John, thank you very much. And to everybody on the call that's on the school committee, I appreciate it. I have a question. When I had written to Representative LaSavidaosa and she had said that the worst case scenario is a 20% cut, she had talked to the Commissioner of the Department of Education today who committed to level funding for Chapter 70. However, that's not necessarily true. But they said they're pushing for 100% of the Student Opportunity Act increases that were promised to our constituents, so there is more to come on that front. Was South Hampton getting any of that money and if so, how much? Does anybody know?
What, John, do you want to speak?
I don't, I don't have that at my, I can find out and email you guys back.
Okay, just curious to see if, it seems to be.
I don't think there was a whole heck of a lot there for us.
I know that it wasn't a whole heck of a lot. There was, there was some money, but it wasn't a whole heck of a lot. As much as we were devastated by not really benefiting from that huge stimulus at all, like it's actually, if I'm remembering it correctly, now it's working in our favor, but.
Yeah.
You know, but yeah, I don't think it was, it was some, but not a heck of a lot.
Yeah, because of our demographics.
Yep.
Exactly. Okay, thank you very much to everybody on the local school committee.
Yep.
And Hampshire Regional for that matter.
All right.
Safety.
We are. We are down to Public Works, Highway. And this, you know, we basically just did this here. This was, you know, highway super discretion. Okay. So that, that amount right there is reflective of the quarter time that we eliminate, you know, that we're restoring with the admin in the Highway Department. And then wages, normal, you know. So that's equitable. The other departments. These were, these were done previously. We're still turning out streetlights, folks, so we got to make sure that we have a process for actually turning them off. Do we have one? Ed? How do we execute that? I mean, we're turning off nearly all of them. I mean, Ian, Ian's hopefully going to work with us on which ones he's, maybe he can create a.
Yeah, you, you won't have to identify the ones that go off or the ones that stay on and then we've got to contact Eversource and have them turn the ones off that we want off.
Yeah.
Now, my memory may not be correct, but I believe when we looked at this several years ago, there was the opportunity for people to pay for a specific street light, say in front of their house or something like that, by contacting the electric company directly. When you ask, when you talk to them about turning them off, can you find that out? Because somebody may feel that they need that light out as well to pay themselves.
Yeah, I hadn't heard of that, but I can check on it for you.
Thank you.
I think that's. Our town and I think that that should be, we should be cautious about that.
Yeah. And I think that the chief had mentioned that he would leave some on at certain intersections, is that right?
Well, that's why we saved 4,000 in that line. I mean, the one that he pinpointed at the last call was the intersection of College Highway and Palmerite.
Yeah, okay.
But the better way to do this would be if he could just create a priority ranking of the important intersections and then we probably just need to have that in our hand while we're having this call with Eversource because ultimately we need to get to a $4,000 bill annually. You know, and we've, and we're already into the year, so we're going to have to account for that. So that, that for me, we should do like now. Like somebody, we need, like Ed, like whoever's like doing this, like Ian probably needs to go up that list immediately and Ed, we should, you know, you are, you know, I'm happy to help. We should call Eversource and have them get on this because we're already into the year, so the clock's already running on this.
Can I ask you a question? We saved $1,000 a month at Norris School because of the recent changes in the lights. Is that a possibility for the streetlights?
No, because that was, that was taken out, he just said that. That was taken out of their, that was used to take out of their budget up there.
No, but I'm saying could, what kind of lights do we use for the streetlights? Is there an opportunity to save in the type of lights we use that would ultimately save on the electricity bill like Norris?
We would have to buy out our streetlights to the tune of about $38,000 or $39,000. And then we, and then we could change the heads on them.
With fixture.
Okay. And we still have $136,000 if we can prove energy savings, so anyway.
Correct.
We're going to do it right now.
Okay, hold on here, folks. Let me go back up here. I'm getting, I'm getting texts. So this, so remember 23? Hold on.
23 was the amount, but it wasn't all out of wages, I don't believe.
No, it was, it was 21,000 originally out of the wages and.
I got it right here in a text. I got it right here in a text and I'm, and I'm sorry, Randall. I, I read, I read your sheet, I read your sheet incorrectly. And so I will fix that. Wages, 1,655, 1.75. And. And that equals.
No, general highway, Matt, I thought he was taking out 44, 48. So you want to add your 2276 from the admin assistant back into the 16, do you not?
Yeah, I just split it up. So, so what he, what he needed to remove from this line, it was a total, a total of 23,277.
Right.
Out of these lines here.
Yep. Yeah.
Just those.
Right.
I've now split that over two lines, wages and expenses per Randall, and that sum is right here, which is the same, 23,27690. I'm looking at a text from him right now.
Okay. All right, because the spreadsheet he gave us said 44, 48 for wages, for expenses, so.
Yeah, and I'm assuming that what he's doing is he's redid the math, which is why, you know, you can bring him on, I think he's watching. If you want to talk, then let him talk, but I'm assuming that he just took the admin expenses out and put it back where he wanted to have it.
Yep, okay, whatever. Just wanted to make sure.
All right. So he's in agreement. Okay, so we're, we got to do this work, so I think we really, like Ed can, is, I don't know if Ian's still on the call, but can we, can we get on this? Because the clock's running. I mean, if you just do, if you do $24,000 divided by four, I know it's probably not that, quite that linear, especially if these things have sensors on them. So we're in a low point now. We're talking 6,000 bucks a quarter. You know, so we're inching up on a quarter of a year. Thankfully, it's the summertime, so they're probably on the least amount of time and I'm hoping.
This is, this is the least possibly billing season.
Yeah, but we got to get these things off. Then we should get them off, we should get them off.
You would, can we ask him? Can you unmute him?
So he can answer.
I didn't hear you read. I'm sorry.
Uh, Matt is talking about the streetlights and you're going to come up with a priority list. He's concerned, we're concerned that it's already into FY '21. And so can that happen sooner rather than later?
I'll take care of it tomorrow.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, Ian.
Okay, we okay with moving on to Health and Human Services?
Yep.
Okay. We have not heard back from this department. This is, this is equitable with the others. Um, yep. And so, you know, obviously this is up to the, I mean, the, the Board of Health itself to figure out. But they got to come up with what amounts to this amount. They've got to come up with $2,988.84 and they only have uh, these, those lines to deal with. And that's what was sent to them, everything above mosquito control.
Now, is, is the-
Technically speaking, it's really, sorry to cut you off, it's just really, it's really just these lines. Because these are the only ones that existed last year.
Populated, yeah.
They're the only ones that existed last year. And that's, those are the numbers that we're working with. So they've got to deal with these numbers over here. And, you know, this is, so yeah, I mean-
And as we, as we looked at the, the quarter, the one-fourth time cut on admin assistance, I think we considered the health agent in that, right? So are we restoring that or not?
Well, then fine, we, that, 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 again, it's going to be their discretion. So if they don't want to cut a quarter time, it's going to be the same way as, as Randall. I mean, I'm happy to, I'm happy for the purposes of this meeting to dump the 14, 80, 84 into the 15, 100. Because that's really the only other line I can take it from, or I could take it from Sharps, I guess. But like, there's 2, 3,000. Thankfully, they're under 3,000. Otherwise, I'm going to have to go into the director line.
I'd throw it down under expenses for now.
Fine.
Ed, do you know, do we get funding from the Sharps program? Is that, that's that $3,000 we have to pay out, right? I mean, we do get funding for that?
No, that, that's all by budget.
Okay, so this, I thought that there was, was that initially a grant?
It may have been. It's been in place since before I got here. I mean, last year, last year, we had to transfer money in there because it was such a successful program that they had exceeded the $3,000 cost. Or I should say fiscal year 19.
Okay.
Since we've actually moved out of fiscal year 20, so it would have been two fiscal years ago.
So then your, your notes would just change there, Matt, right?
Uh, yeah, I would just do this and then I would say, uh, Okay. Um, then, oh, sorry, shoot. I need to readjust that. And I didn't. Wait, 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 wait. Sorry. I need to, okay, so I need to dump that into here. Let me just do it.
And I, I got a text from the Councilaging Director, Janet Kane, and Darlene, the administrative assistant, or actually the assistant, rather, is paid seven hours per week from the town budget and three hours out of the state formula grant.
Okay, did they indicate where they want to take the 650 and change from?
Nope.
Well, I guess-
Expenses as well, Matt, rather than a salary line.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Thank you. I didn't see that. I appreciate that.
Yeah, let's keep it under expect, under the same,
Yep.
same lines, yeah.
Just hold on a second. All right, okay.
Why wasn't that administrative assistant position reinstated the way the others?
It was, same way as Highway.
Why isn't there anything on the line here?
Well, I restored it.
Yeah, that's, that's the cut line.
That's the cut line. Right here is the cut line.
Okay, so you put it back, okay.
Well, I had to take those-
I got you. You moved it up. Fine, thank you.
And I moved it to expenses. I, you had to add the two together.
Okay.
Because the same way we did for Highway, it's the same amount of money out of the department. It's just not out of the admin line.
Okay.
That make sense?
Yeah. But I guess for budget purposes, once we get on this budget report purposes, we should track them.
Yep.
You know, in the categories in which they occur.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, library, let's see. We heard back from library and they came up with 7,500. So I will just, I will just modify.
And they were still planning on cutting one, one day a week, is that right?
Monday.
But that's, but that still gives them their minimum 25 hours to be accredited?
Correct.
And now we're down to employee benefits. Since the, to balance this, Ed and I talked a little bit here. You know, we trimmed a little here. And that's the only difference. If you're, if you guys want, well, no, it's the only difference from our last meeting.
And that's all feasible according to Jen and her numbers?
It's close.
It's close, yeah.
I think everything, but John, you can chime in, but it's-
I mean, it's close. Is it possible that we might go over that? Sure, I mean, you just won't know. I mean, it's, it's a guessing, you know?
And we are 70 cents over budget.
Whoa. Big spenders.
Yeah. So-
Do you want to put it back in legal?
No. I'm going to put it in legal, Ed. I mean, I don't want to make all the decisions here, but that's probably where it needs to go. Where is it?
I'd just leave it there.
70 cents?
Yeah.
That's not good accounting principles.
It's better accounting principles than showing a deficit.
No, I'm going to make it zero.
Still make it zero.
There you go.
There we go.
Right.
I mean, I'm not, I don't know about you folks, I'm not happy about this, but, or where, where we need to be right now, I guess.
Well, you know, when we, when we, we get further numbers from the state, you know, the town, townspeople can vote to move money and to make other decisions. We can make some recommendations once we know where we're going to stand. I mean, Chapter 70 and, you know, restorative government aid is going to be, you know, the big, big thing that we don't know.
I'm just hopeful that some of this grant money from either the state or federal government comes in.
Yeah, we've all known for a couple of weeks-
Schools really need it. Schools really need it.
Fingers crossed.
I know, I know.
Okay, so then why don't we have, if it's all right, Rainey, I mean, should we just briefly discuss that we want to put forth a town meeting and article to override our budget in the amount of $230,000 and change? To not have to do any of this if we can get it to pass on the ballot?
I think that's-
That would be my position on that.
Yeah, I think we need, that's one of the things we need to discuss now, actually.
Because we have a balanced budget, which by law, we need to present to the citizens in case they don't vote for an override. But, you know, I mean, my opinion on the matter is, is that, you know, we, we got a deficit right now of two, what is it? Just to make sure we're using exact numbers, 238,121.24. I personally would support overriding our budget for that amount to keep everybody whole and to restore this, these columns to where they need to be.
I think the one downside of that would be, let's say we do that. And does anybody have any concerns that if our, our numbers come in much, much worse, that we're going to be going back with another request for an override? Or is there, are people comfortable with that idea?
Okay, well, that's a good, for me, that's a good discussion because, I mean, I guess it plays on the thought of, would citizens support an override now versus, versus later? And so like that, I don't know, I don't know the answer to. There's part of me that thinks that maybe they'd have, they'd support an override more later than now because they want to see their government reflect the people, and the people are suffering now. And they want, you know, they want,
Yeah.
Not, not that everybody's evil intention here, but they, you know, the government should follow the people in terms of
Yeah.
the level of suffering. And then, you know, so I don't know. What do you guys all think?
I would tend to agree with that, Matt, that I, I think it would be easier to go ahead with this balanced budget presentation that shows all the hard work that's been done, the many hours that have gone into this and, and the, you know, the real scrubbing of the numbers that the various departments have done. And then if we do get a, a worse cut than what we're projecting here and we have to go back to the town, I think that's a heck of a lot easier argument to make that, you know, we did our best and we, you know, we came as close as we could. But the cuts are deeper than we projected and we really need the town to kick in.
I, I, I agree. I think we should show up with a balanced budget. Once we have all the numbers, go back if we have to.
Yeah, I agree with all that's been said. And just to add to it, people that haven't been following this process on Zoom, I think those people will look at the budget and say, okay, you made the cuts. That's great. There's no real big curtailing of any services. So I'm not going to support a proper to an override, just do it. But if we have to cut another 250,000, we show up all the services we will have to cut, then I think we'll get their attention. And I don't think we get their attention twice.
Well, well, you know, I, you know.
Yeah, I think there are cuts that are curtailing services. There are a couple of teachers that are being delayed on hiring, which is a huge issue for the school because their cycle is hiring at the beginning of the school year. I think that there are other cuts that are happening that I think will curtail services. But I still nonetheless agree. If we're hit so hard in this state, I think come fall, I think, you know, we're looking at override. We're looking at operational stabilization. I mean, I think that's when, if it comes, becomes dire, then for me, all of that's on the table. Yeah.
Me too.
Yeah.
And, and I, I wanted to reiterate the same thing, like there's absolutely loss of service in this budget.
Right.
Every, every department is, honestly, I actually feel like it's extreme loss of service, in my opinion, but-
I don't think the people that haven't, haven't been paying attention are going to see it that clearly as we have, plus the other people involved. It's, it's excruciatingly painful to do what we're doing. But if you see this budget for the first time, you may look at it and say, oh, okay, that's fine, you know?
I don't know anybody that would say that, but I think the department heads are, have risen to the occasion once again. And I'm very grateful, but I think their budgets, it's scary when you cut EMT line and ambulance, I mean, that's our ambulance service. I, I just, you know, I think it's, I think it's dire and it might get worse and it's very scary. And we'll have to just do this hard work again when we know what the cuts are going to be.
Yeah.
I mean, we've had people in the past who cavalierly say, well, just cut a third shift from police or cut a third shift from fire. You know, they don't realize the impact that that has on the community sometimes. So.
Yeah. Okay, so let's have a motion then, please.
I'll make the motion. We accept the budget as adjusted at tonight's meeting and presented as a balanced budget at the town meeting.
I'll second that.
Are there discussion questions?
I just, I think it might be worth, if we're having discussion, and if you allow it, Rainey, to make sure that Ed has a voice in here, Jen, and if our town accountant is on, I would, just see if we can do anything totally correct here.
I welcome, I don't see Vicki on here, but I certainly welcome Jen to chime back in and Ed.
And then?
Sorry, I was reading the agenda going forward for tonight and I missed.
The question basically is, I mean, how do you feel about what we're doing here? And do you disagree with something that we're doing? Meaning that it just isn't going to work, the number isn't going to work, and we got to relook at it. I mean, you look at this all day and, and Ed does, and so does Vicki. So that, you know, I, there's part of me that just, I want your opinion on this.
I mean, there's nothing that really, I mean, none of it's good, but it's what has to be done. There's nothing that sticks out as impossible to me.
Yeah, I think that's really what the question is, is are we, you know, is there something that we're doing that's just not in, in line with reality?
Yeah.
Yeah, let me, um-
And if you need to see something, I'm happy to scroll to it.
I could get back and I could look at the whole spreadsheet again. Of course, there were a lot of changes made today. I mean, any change that was made today, I can't say I disagree with. We have to cut from somewheres. Most of the changes were, you know, the departments had the decision as to where it was coming from. I'm getting text messages though. Mayla. I think Lucy wanted to speak in regards to her assistant. I'm not sure.
Okay, so can I just ask Ed first, what feedback you have, Ed?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's not ideal. There is a good deal of pain here. You know, whether you talk about, you know, police wages and can we cover all the shifts as the year goes on? Whether you talk about, you know, EMT or EMS wages and how, how the year goes on? And will that be adequate? Or as we get towards the end of the year, would be, we would be in danger of taking, you know, the ambulance out of play for, you know, a shift. you know, a shift. Um, we've cut expenses extremely tight and, you know, we have held a few positions, uh, you know, open, uh, and chosen not to fill them, uh, which is never a good thing. So it's, it's a, an exercise in, shall we say, there is a level of pain here, obviously not the same level as if we found out, you know, either now or whether it's in a month that instead of, uh, you know, a, a reduction in state aid that amounted to a $238,000, you know, deficit from when we started, that we've actually got to meet a $500,000, you know, deficit and those cuts are going to be that much, you know, deeper. So, um, you know, I, I think in general, everyone's done a good job in trying to mitigate that pain as best as possible and still attempt to keep the core services that we have.
Okay. Well, Ed, I think we'll let you speak, um, to the general government for here. So at this point, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there any further discussion from the select board on the current budget, balanced budget? Then all those in favor.
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll and die.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. Thank you so much, everyone.
And I know John made the motion. Who seconded it?
I did.
So Francine?
Okay.
Okay, I'm, uh, at this point going to get back to, uh, the budget, um, I mean, the agenda. Um, is any other necessary business that can't wait until the next select board meeting, which is July 21st? Wait a minute.
Nope.
It'd actually be, um, what, August 4th or whatever?
August 4th.
Yeah. Any other additional business? Okay, so seeing or hearing none. Um, Matt, I know you just got through doing all of this. You're our representative from PQB. Are you able or interested in reading off the PCFs?
Sure. Yeah, hold on a second here. So I'm going to leave off the town clerk one right now. Discuss that separately. Is that all right?
Yep.
So we'll do the other ones together, maybe. I'll read them. PCF Philip Lanier, Police Department, change from part-time officer to restricted officer. PCF for Ron Lauren, Building Department, being hired for new hire, full-time with benefits for building commissioner. PCF for Richard Homan, Council on Aging Van Driver, changing weekly hours up to 27 to up to 19.5 hours.
With no benefits.
No benefits. Uh, PRF for Part-Time Van Driver, Council on Aging, up to 19.5 hours per week at 15.15 dollars and 30 cents per hour. And then, uh, PRF for Part-Time Police Officer, Police Department, part-time up to 19.5 hours per week at 18 and a half dollars per hour.
And you have a resignation as well?
Um, sure. Yeah. So PCF for Don Young, Town Clerk Office, resignation.
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, like he said, we will handle the other one separately. So, uh, do we have a motion to accept the PCFs, tariffs?
I move to accept the PCFs and PRFs with the exception of the Assistant Town Clerk.
I'll second that.
Uh, further discussion or questions? All those in favor then?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll and die.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. So the Assistant Town Clerk was a position that we're currently delaying with, um, hiring. And so, um, there is not current, uh, just wanted to see whether there's interest in waiving that right now and bringing it back up, uh, when we are in the position to fund it.
Well, it's just a question of what the proper policy and procedure is here. I mean, you know, we're not, we're not voting the person or the process that's been followed down like we do sometimes with paperwork issues and everything else. Um, it's not really that we don't want to hire this person. This is a question, like, what is the, what do we do here in this scenario where we just want to delay hire? Or the delay could be for a long time, could be all year.
Right.
So what, what's the, what's the proper process to follow here?
Well, if you're not going to fill a position and it could be a period of time, I would say that you would hold, hold off on it until such a time that you feel that the position could be filled.
Should just pass over it?
One, one comment, and we didn't pick up on it before, but we were talking about the, the assistance that would be fully funded. The Town Clerk isn't an assistant, it's actually the Assistant Town Clerk, which is a whole different function. So I, I don't know if Lucy's on the line, she wants to weigh in on that, but that is a lot different than a admin assistant. I don't know legally what we need to have in place. That's, I guess Lucy can tell us that.
Legally, you need a town clerk. You don't need, have to have a Assistant Town Clerk.
Can anybody, can anybody fill out, um, functions if need be, um, in, in Lucy's absence?
That would have to be an appointment of the Town Clerk.
So she could appoint somebody in the town hall to, uh, sign off on various, um, documents and such in her absence?
No, it has.
They still do training and stuff, but hang on, let me find her and unmute her.
It has to be her Assistant Town Clerk that would do those duties. She can't appoint somebody else.
Yeah.
Okay. So if she was absent, um, I mean, there are some duties like a notary. Yeah, we could have a different notary. But as far as, um, the town seal and certifying any documents, it has to be the Town Clerk or the Assistant Town Clerk. It can't be anybody else.
I think we just have to do a good job planning for the time being.
Yeah.
We have to plan around vacations and absences and do the best we can. I mean, that's the.
Yep.
We have to do. That's what, that's, I mean, you know, I know that this stinks, but, you know.
Like I said.
Let me ask you a question. It's something, it's like building commissioner, when the building commissioner isn't available, we have somebody that can cover, uh, in emergencies. Does that make sense for this position? It wouldn't cost us anything unless, you know, something happened to Lucy, for instance, wasn't going to be here for two weeks, then we'd have somebody in place to come in and do that. Uh, because the, the seal, if you don't have anybody else does the seal, that stops a lot of stuff from happening.
That's what we just talked about, John, that it would have to, um, Jennifer's saying that it has to be, um, an Assistant Town Clerk, that a notary put into place to actually handle some of the notary functions, but that, that would just have to be absorbed and there'd have to be some planning on that part. And I just want to remind everybody that we did just spend a tremendous amount of time approving the budget. And I mentioned that it's a case of unfortunate timing, that positions are vacant and are being delayed from hiring. So I'm going to just, I think the, the bottom line and what Ed said is that we pass over this, um, PCF for now. And, uh, at any point when we have more firm or funding and we can do transfers or we can go back to the town, I think that's the time that we're going to have to be able to do that. In the meantime, I would like, if Ed and or Jen could look into who could, uh, who legally is able to assume the functions of the Town Clerk in their absence. Is that okay?
I can look into that.
Okay, that'd be great. So, uh, we'll pass over that. And I believe the next thing on the agenda is the warrants. Am I right about that?
Yeah.
So, uh, Francine?
Okay, warrant P 20-54 for $70,830.12. We're going to pass over W 21-1 for the 964 and change. We, we approved that at our last meeting. Um, P 21-2 for $187,085.18 and PB 21-2 for $41,129.129.10.
Okay. Any comments or questions about the warrants?
Uh, no, but again, maybe my memory, I missed it. But did we vote on the, uh, before, on the PCFs and all that?
Yeah, I think we, I think we do need to, I do probably need to vote down the, the, the Town Clerk position. I think we need to, we need to act on that in some way.
Yeah, I wouldn't leave it hanging out in limbo.
Okay. Well, would someone like to make a motion then?
I make a motion to not approve the Assistant Town Clerk position, part-time, no benefits. PRF.
I'm just wording on that. Do we want to say that we don't approve it? Or do you want to say that we're going to pass over it for now? Um, or something like that? Just to say it's not approved sort of means that we're not okay with anything that's in the document?
Yeah. I would rather have a passover kind of language for just to say that, you know, we would consider this as.
Happy. Yeah, I'm happy to amend it. So, uh, for, uh, purposes of our budget, um, the PRF for the Assistant Town Clerk, Town Clerk Office, part-time, no benefits, the select board, I move to, to pass over that request for the time being until we have a firm understanding of our budget going forward.
Uh, we have a motion and we have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Um, Matt and then Francine, any further questions or comments?
How is this going to, I was going to say, how is this going to affect our upcoming election? It's going to be, I mean, we've got elections coming up in five weeks, but the Assistant Town Clerk would do some of that work, would they not normally? There's no way to hire somebody untemporarily for a day or two to help out with elections if we needed to?
We can hire somebody, you can hire somebody to help with the elections, uh, or bring them in under election wages that doesn't have to be an Assistant Town Clerk.
Okay. It was under the election wages line that we kept in there? Okay. I just wanted to clarify that. Thanks. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we did appoint a number of election workers, so there might be some things that they can do that are unofficial.
Yeah.
Okay. Anything else? Motion and second relative to the Assistant Town Clerk position? All in favor then?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll and die.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. Next, we have minutes from April 14th. It was a Zoom meeting.
We did vote on the warrants, right?
Um, I don't know.
Vote on them. Do you just have to read them?
Yeah, we don't need to.
Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
Uh, everyone get a chance to read the minutes?
Yep.
Yeah, they look fine.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have any issues.
Yeah. I make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
I'll second.
Uh, Chris and then John, any questions or comments? All in favor then?
Tishman, I.
Falls, I.
Roll and die.
Martin, I.
And Groden, I. Calendar, um, announcements.
Make the motion and who seconded, please?
Chris made the motion.
Chris?
Yeah, I second it.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, next is calendar announcements with the select board meetings on tomorrow night. Tomorrow night's, um, meeting is dedicated to reviewing the articles for the warrant for town meeting. And I believe our hope is to approve them tomorrow night. And then we have, uh, meetings on the 4th and the 18th of August. And so at this point, uh, we're not going to go through the, um, articles. They are listed there. Now, they're likely to change, I believe. So any further, uh, before we open up for the public, is, does anybody else have anything they'd like to talk about? All right. Then at this point, we'll have open time for the public. And the select board reserves a portion of its meeting for public comment and encourages participation. And I will not read all of the, um, guidelines for participation. So are there any letters to be read or anybody on the Zoom that would like to speak?
I do have a letter. Um, it's from, uh, Convy Stahl, from, uh, the live, library trustees, and says, "To the members of the select board, Maureen Groden, John Martin, Francine Trish, Tishman, Christine Falls, Matt Roland, at Gibson Town Administrator. First, I would like to thank all of you for the long hours that you have spent on the budget. It is a difficult and arduous task, especially without having adequate funds. We are going through unprecedented times, which further exacerbates the process. During your discussions, there were questions raised about the library and whether it is an essential service. While the library does not plow roads, it does provide essential service. Start with books, computers, and audiobooks, reference materials, adult and children's programs. It complements the school program and is the parent choice after-school place for children and teens. It also serves as community resource center where members of community can come for meetings, classes, job counseling, and tutoring, and much more. It is the place to access e-government services. One can get professional help to assess the accuracy and relevance of information from the internet. It is also the place for lifelong learning for everyone on an equal basis and free of charge. There are often several cars in the parking lot using the free Wi-Fi service, especially during the pandemic. Even with the physical closing, reading eBooks, numerous online library programs, and being able to call for reference information has been a lifesaver for many families. The library staff was tremendous in providing services under a difficult situation. Now, the library is open to curbside pickup and is busier than ever, having just done over 376 bags of books. This will only increase with the opening of the interlibrary loan program. The library has always presented a fair budget and willingness to work with the town during difficult times. We realize that cuts must be made, but ask that they be done proportionately with other departments so that we may be granted a waiver from the library state board. Please note that if we lose our accreditation, Southampton residents will not be able to use any other library nor get books from the interlibrary loan program. We will lose state aid, which is used to purchase books. Additionally, when reapplying for certification, we will have to meet the total appropriated municipal income standard rather than the MAR requirement. The state requires the library to be open at least 25 hours a week, including some evening hours. If the library is closed by the town, we immediately lose certification and state aid. The library cannot apply for recertification until it needs the standards for one complete fiscal year and a proper application is made to the MBLC. Budget cuts are coming just as library use is soaring. Economic hard times encourage people to borrow DVDs, books, and newspapers rather than buy them, and to use public computer terminals for job searches. Library usage is increasing while budgets are being cut. Studies have shown that for every $1 states or cities cut from the library budgets, households and businesses spend $2.38 to $6.54 more from their own pockets. Property values are enhanced in communities with excellent libraries. The library was not closed during the Great Depression. Convy Stahl, 14 Jonathan Judd Circle, Southampton, Edwards Public Library Trustee.
Convy, I know, um, I noticed is on the call, and I just want to say thank you for your letter. It's, um, you know, the cuts were across the board in similar percentages. And, you know, certainly, library is one of those community centers in town where kids and lots of people congregate, and it's not something that we choose to do. It's something that we have to do, unfortunately. So, but thank you very much for your very thoughtful letter. Um, we got another letter from Jerry Swanson, uh, our health director, relative to the town meeting. And is that handy or is that something you want to read? is that handy or is that something you want to read?
If you could, if whoever's unmuted now could just mute the television that's in the same room.
Is it Barbara? I don't know who's.
Somebody has the television running that's unmuted, and it's got to be either Convy.
Okay, Ed Gibson?
Yes.
Yeah, so Jerry Swanson sent a letter to the select board about the annual town meeting. And I don't know if you have that handy, if you want to read it, or since we're talking about the articles for the warrant, if it, it would be better to read tomorrow night.
I don't have it. I will make sure I have it for tomorrow night, for, to go along with the articles.
That sounds good. Is there anybody else from the public who'd like to speak?
Tammy's got her hand up.
Can you unmute Tammy, please, Ed?
Yeah, I'm trying to unmute everybody, actually, so. There, Tammy's unmuted.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy Walunas, 298 College Highway. I have two pieces. I just want to add to Francine's Hampshire Regional School Committee update that she had given. The Hampshire Regional School Committee is now meeting every two weeks. And our next meeting is actually in the auditorium. So we are going on campus and, and checking everything out and doing tours and really validating everything that's being done up at the Hampshire Regional. So I wanted to let you know that we're, we've jumped on top of this and we're there every two weeks now. The second thing I have is, I know Janet Brown had put forth High Street becoming a scenic route, a historical route kind of thing. And it was said that there would be no costs to this. But there are legal costs that have to be paid, and I know we're watching what we spend. So is that something to be doing right now, then, if we're in this crisis of not, trying not to spend money? There's, there's closings and, and, and there's a ton of legal fees that come about with this. I'm just curious.
Well, my sense is that I wouldn't want, wouldn't want to just deny somebody. I mean, I think that's the will of the voters. The next step is a public hearing about it being a scenic road, and I think that a public hearing would involve all the facts of it. So if it's possible to get the legal fees as part of that information, I think that would be important, but I wouldn't want to stop someone at this particular point who's putting forth something, and the next step is the planning board to arrange a public hearing.
Yeah.
So, Ed, is it possible to find out what the charges to the town would be if this went forward?
Yeah, I really don't see this generating much, any legal fees.
Okay.
Yeah, from my, my knowledge too, from previous things, I'm not aware of any legal fees. I mean, signage and various other things that we haven't even done on the current scenic roads. I can't imagine what legal fees there are to designate this, but if there are some, we need to know it, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else from the public that's like to speak?
Convy has, Convy has her hand up.
First of all, thank you. It's been a very informative process, and I appreciate, again, all the work you've done. I guess my question is, when will this actually go into effect? At town meeting, when, when it's voted on as a balanced budget? Is that when this all will actually happen?
Well, a lot of it too is, what we've been told by our legislators is that July and August were, were 1/12 budgets based on FY '20. That September will either be a 1/12 budget or it'll be a 1/4 budget. And then the town will vote on the balanced budget that we're presenting to them as a warrant article. But when it would actually be implemented would be, correct me if I'm wrong, Ed, it would be somewhat dependent on the legislature, right?
No, it should go into effect after that town, town meeting vote is done and recorded.
So our allowance to have a 1/12 and then 1/4 budget is only because we have to, because we haven't passed a FY '21 budget?
That is correct.
Yeah, but this new budget that we're voting in goes retro back to July 1, just like, as it will.
We have no, no firm numbers in terms of revenue, right?
No, and then, and then, and then once those figures are released, that's when we would have to do our planning for either restoring some of the cuts that were made at a special town meeting or thinking about having a, another special town meeting for further reductions.
Okay, so if we pass this on August 15th, and then we have to go back and make reconciliations for July and August?
Correct.
Okay. So, so all of the departments will then put in place what we have said. For example, the library will then close on Mondays. That's correct? As, as of August 15th or 16th, that's when we would begin?
I mean, the savings need to be realized over the course of a fiscal year, and which starts on July 1. So this budget is entirely based on an entire fiscal year. It is not taking into account the months that have already elapsed. So however it, whatever it takes for you to realize the savings that you need to realize, we apologize that you're getting that number close to two months. You know, by the time we end up doing this, it'll be close to two months in, but those savings are based on an entire year of spend. And then frankly, when we do, if we have to do this again, which is, which is why I mentioned this during the call, if we have to do this again sometime in late fall, early winter, those numbers will be based off an entire year as well. So whatever further cuts we need to do is, we got to get those cuts in.
Yep.
Before the end.
But I guess my point will be is that the town residents will begin to see the actual cuts already so that when you go forth, say in September, October, when things are finalized and you need, for example, to do an override, residents will have already started to experience some of the, some of these cuts. And so they can see that this is real. This is not something that we're all being alarmist about and whoa, you know, that we're going to get saved at last minute, I think. And so I think your point about waiting to do the override if it's necessary, which it sounds like it may be, is a good one. And because then, as I said, people can see what we are trying to accomplish now.
Right. And I think that closing of the library is a, you know, there are the changes in the wage and expense line of the various departments. You know, I think the decision of how to manage those cuts are made by the department, department heads and, you know, and perhaps trustees in, in your case. But I don't think our decision, our right is to say, you're going to close the library on Monday. I mean, I think that's a decision of the.
Oh, no, no, no. I didn't, I didn't mean that at all. I, I, and, and we, you know, Barbara and all agreed, this is one of the ways. And we wanted, as a library, to make sure that we were doing our part, and this is one of the ways that we felt that we, we could do this and still maintain our services, correct, Barbara? And, and so, no, 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 we're not that. But I just say, I'm saying that at least town residents can see that there is, everyone is trying to do their very best here to meet the budgets, if at all possible. Barbara, do you want to add anything or?
No, you said it very well, Convy.
Anybody else like to speak about the budget or anything else? Well, thank you, everybody, again, for another difficult discussion. Tomorrow night will be the articles, which, you know, will be another, you know, discussion. Hopefully, it'll not be difficult, but at any rate, just to remind everybody that the funds that we have, for example, capital funds and such, is a different pot of money. So it might seem like, you know, why are we cutting so much here and then we have this money here? But anyway, so that's our task tomorrow night is to go through the articles that have been submitted, approved by the capital committee, and suggest articles for the warrant. And I think the plan, the deadline is to do that by tomorrow, right, Ed?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so if nobody has anything else, then we'll adjourn. So if I could have a motion to adjourn?
I just want to add, we'll also be doing the community preservation articles, right?
Yep.
All articles.
All, and they're listed on the agenda, so if people would like to see them, they're all there. There might be some changes, I believe. Okay, may I have a motion to adjourn, please? I move to adjourn.
I'll second it.
Okay, Francine and then, all those in favor? Francine and then Chris seconded it?
Okay.
All those in favor?
Tishman, aye.
Falls, aye.
Rowland, aye.
Hart, aye.
Groden, aye. Good night, everyone.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Tomorrow night.
Night.